Okay, um, my dog's having a bit of a thing. I didn't want you all to have to endure, so I'm ready to start now.
And Chair Richardson, if you could, um, if I could just, if you could jump to me after you speak, so I can talk about things to talk about.
I'm sorry, say that one more time, I'm gonna turn you up.
If you could, uh, or maybe, maybe I wanna make, should I make my, I'll make my announcement now, and then you can do your script, since you go right to the end, does that work?
You're gonna make, you're gonna, you're gonna make your announcement now, you said? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and sorry, we're, just a quick announcement. Um, one change in procedure, um, at last time, we did, as you all aware, you know, we, we trying to get through every letter received, we received a lot. Um, we did have some kind of duplicative form letters last time. So, um, one change we're gonna do is if there is a letter with identical content, um, I'm gonna note that and just say, you know, this was read earlier, and just the name, the school community, and whether they're opposed or in favor of the recommendation. But, uh, we're not gonna be reading identical letters or form letters tonight, but we will indicate, you know, um, their opposition and position. And in addition, those individual letters will be shared with the full board, and they will have access. But just so we can get through all, everyone, uh, again, we're not gonna be reading form letters tonight. So, again, well, you will have your name, where you stand, and what school community you are from read. Uh, and so now I'll turn it over to Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you so much, um, Christian, thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's special work session for annual review. I want to thank the community members that came out for the co-mar hearing on December the 2nd, as well as those, um, testifying this evening. I will now re-roll call of the board to identify who's present. So please identify yourself first before speaking for the record. Commissioner Vandema?
Yes, Commissioner Vandema.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Chinia?
Present.
Commissioner Griffin?
I'm here.
Commissioner Horowitz?
Present.
Commissioner James? Commissioner McFadden?
Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner Reed? And Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Awesome, and I'm here. So, there are seven of us here with three of us absent.
Reed's here.
Commissioner Reed, perfect, eight of us are here with two absent, thank you. Um, we will start tonight's hearing with a recap presentation from Ms. Angela Alvarez, followed by public testimony. Please keep your phones muted and videos off until it is your time to testify. I will now turn things over to Ms. Alvarez for presentation, thank you.
You can't hear me, sorry, I was muted, didn't realize I was muted. Good evening, everybody, Angela Alvarez, I'm the executive director of the Office of New Initiatives. I'm gonna just kinda briefly go through this, so, um, we can maximize the time for public testimony. And so I'm gonna skip a few things, um, and just kind of put us where we are in terms of timeline. So, um, tonight is the final opportunity to present oral testimony to the board. Members of the community can still send written testimony through January 7th, it just needs to be received by the board by January 7th. And the board will make its final decisions on the recommendations at its regular meeting on January 11th. And you can join that meeting in the same way you're joining this meeting. Um, this is a summary of the recommendations. I'm gonna leave that for a moment, for people to see that. Uh, and with that, we are, um, here's the addresses for you to send, um, pub, uh, written testimony to the board by the January 7th date, so you can send it to this, um, email address, portfolio recommendations@bcps.k12.md.us, or by regular mail, um, 200 East North Avenue, room 406. On your envelope, please, um, write annual review recommendations, or the specific recommendation, so our staff can prioritize that separate from other mail. Baltimore, Maryland, 2102, 21202. Again, written testimony must be submitted by January 7th, uh, so the board can consider it before they make their final determinations. With that, I just wanna thank everybody and members of the public for being present and testifying. Um, tonight, it's important, um, we all really wanna hear your voice. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Christian, so we can start.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Before we do start, I do notice that the, um, recording stopped. So I wanna make sure we capture all this, um, JP or anybody else from IT, are we about to restart recording? Actually, I can record. Actually, it looks like, okay, I'm, it looks like I can record, so I'll just record and then just send it over. So I think that should be fine, so it looks like we are recording. Um, before we start, I do see some of our elected officials on, so I wanted to give you all opportunity to speak. Uh, I know Councilman Bullock, uh, reached out in advance to testify. But if any other, um, elected officials, I see Delegate Wells and Councilman Costello wanna speak, please just let us know. But, uh, Councilman Bullock, uh, you are first.
Well, good evening, and I appreciate, uh, the opportunity. So, uh, thank you, city schools, uh, commissioners, uh, CEO Santalisis and staff. Um, obviously, I'm Councilman John Bullock, representing the 9th District. And, uh, speaking tonight on behalf of the families, um, that includes children and parents in the neighborhoods that are affected, uh, by the proposed closure of Stewart Hill. And that's folks in Union Square, Mount Clair, Franklin Square, and Howells Roundhouse neighborhoods. And we will be negatively affected. And as a collective, just wanna say that we stand really in strong opposition to the proposed closure. Uh, you'll be hearing not only from myself, but other community members directly regarding the significant impact in this. Now, I, I know you've done your due diligence, and we all recognize, um, that city schools are more than just buildings, right? I mean, they're parts of neighbors, a part of our fabric. And any cost benefit analysis must take into consideration all the multiple factors. And so, one of the things that I also wanted to highlight, is we look at the 9th District, um, and this neighborhood in particular, look at these predominantly black and brown communities that are bearing the brunt of these proposals. Um, also, if you look at, um, the area of southwest Baltimore, we know that there are a high population of English language learners. And as an increasing Latino population in our community, which is an important and growing demographic, especially needed in quite, uh, in light of these recent census figures that have been on decline. But what I'll also say is that, uh, Stewart Hill has been a longtime anchor in the community, providing resources and stability for some of our folks who really need it the most. And I think it's really critical, especially at this time, in the midst of a pandemic, where trust and relationships are very key. And so, I understand the district's rationale, um, is partially based on the building conditions, um, as far as Stewart Hill's concerned. However, I would argue that these issues can be remedied by infrastructure investments and repairs in a more timely fashion. Um, also, I have to really state that our district, the 9th District, has been, uh, particularly hit hard as we've already faced two, uh, school closures already in the last two years. And so, it's a disproportionate impact, uh, in a geographical basis, as we look at west and southwest Baltimore. Um, you know, as an educator, and I know many of you are educators as well, or have been in schools, we know that climate and culture is very important. And so, we look at the physical distance, that some of our students will have to travel, um, but also the challenges relates to some of the fractured relationships, uh, that have been built over time. Um, also, as we make these kind of decisions, not only now, uh, but in the future, I think it's really important that, uh, community collaboration and input be central as we make these kinds of decisions. Um, even looking at, uh, some of the proposals in terms of the dividing line, which is looking at Gilmore Street, it really cuts through a neighborhood, which, yeah, we believe will really create a hardship for some of our students. And, uh, quite frankly, I know some of the local residents, um, in the surrounding area have worked tirelessly actually to support the school. There've been beautification efforts, they've been generating resources, grant dollars, and other, um, opportunities to really help the school. And so, we would really like to count on the school system as a partner of such efforts, and not be seen as an obstacle. And so, given those aforementioned points, we were really, um, asked that you reconsider this proposed, uh, closure. Again, given all the factors that are included, um, at this time. And so, I'll turn it over to others who wanna speak, but I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to have this input tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing what others have to say as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, are there any elected officials on that would like to say something before we move on to letters and emails? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I wish that I had contracted Councilman Bullock to speak on behalf of my situation. He did such an eloquent job. Uh, first, I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Santalisis and her team. Um, I know that their priority, uh, is making sure that our students have a quality and safe education. Uh, I know they work tirelessly around the clock every day, um, to do that. So I appreciate their commitment to our students and our families. Um, that being said, I, of course, uh, disagree with the recommendation, uh, to close the Utah Marshburn Elementary School program. Um, this school is a hub in our community, uh, in central west Baltimore. Um, there are, uh, strong supports, uh, at the school, uh, for not only our students, but our families, uh, specifically through the Promise Heights, uh, Community School Program, that's run out of the University of Maryland Baltimore School of Social Work. Uh, this, uh, proposed closure would have a disproportionate impact on our students, as many of them would be forced to cross Pennsylvania Avenue or cross, uh, North Avenue, uh, to get to school. Uh, and I think there's a lot of, uh, concerns that have been raised, uh, not only by parents, uh, of students, but alumni, uh, community members, uh, faculty, uh, staff, and other stakeholders, uh, of what this would mean for our community. Uh, this, this part of the city is actually growing in population. Uh, and I do feel that this analysis, uh, that led to the recommendation did not take that into consideration. Uh, and this area is gonna continue to grow. Uh, and it's important that we don't leave, uh, a three acre site, uh, left in the middle of the neighborhood, uh, to be vacant, uh, for however many years upcoming, uh, because, you know, the school system made this recommendation, and the city doesn't have the tools to do something productive with this property, uh, to make sure it's not a blight on our community. I know you're gonna hear from faculty, staff, family, alumni, community members, et cetera. I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say. Uh, and I will say, just as Councilman Bullock mentioned, uh, the, the folks that are on here, uh, on behalf of Utah Marshburn Elementary School, are all in support of keeping the school open collectively. So I look forward to hearing what they have to say. I wanna thank them, uh, for their advocacy. And, uh, lastly, Madam Chair and Commissioners, wanna thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I see Delegate Wells on video, did you wanna say something? Are you unmuted?
Hello, yes, sorry, I was having some technical difficulties. Um, but I just, I second everything that my colleague said before. Uh, my op, says, my office has been receiving emails, uh, urging not to close, um, the Utah Marshburn and Stewart, um, Stewart Hill as well. And so, and my understanding is that, um, individuals would like to have forums like this that we're having tonight, where there can be some more dialogue and feedback and transparency around, um, how do we continue to support our young people or students in that community? So I just wanna thank you all for being here. I'm here to listen, um, to all the other individuals in the community that I represent, um, who are gonna be sharing their sentiments. So thank you very much again for, for having this forum for us today.
Thank you, Delegate Wells. Uh, Delegate Amprey, I see you on video, did you wanna also make some remarks?
Yes, I, I just, I'll echo with my, my colleague Delegate Wells said. Um, I, I definitely believe that both schools that are, uh, in, in the, in our area, uh, Utah Marshburn and Stewart Hill, uh, play a significant role in the community. And as a former educator, uh, I was an educator that believed in living near, uh, the communities that I served. I always lived in the same zip code as my students. Um, and part of that was the belief that the school is the heartbeat of the community. It's not only a place where students learn, it's also an ecosystem, uh, where there's other opportunities and resources that are available to the community, and both schools serve that, uh, to the community. And I believe that there's just an opportunity where there can be, uh, I would love to see more input and more opportunities for collaboration between the community, uh, in order to, uh, assess, uh, how to move forward. And I think that, um, you know, our, our school system is doing a great job. With Dr. Santalisis' leadership, we have seen leaps and bounds over the few, past few years. Uh, but I do, uh, agree with, uh, Councilman Costello and his statements earlier, and that there should be a reassessment of the, uh, pending closures. Um, and I really look forward tonight to hearing, uh, from the community members, uh, and some of the staff about what they believe is necessary. And I had the opportunity to actually go and serve this past Saturday at Utah Marshburn, and I really believe that there is a lot of, uh, capacity for opportunity and growth there. Um, and I really think that, um, I really hope that, uh, people really take to heart the comments and, uh, things that are gonna be said tonight from the community members and, uh, members of the school, uh, school community.
Thank you, uh, Delegate Amprey. Uh, before we move on, are there any other elected officials on the line that would like to speak? Okay, uh, we're gonna start with testimony. Uh, the first is from Darian, the, excuse me, Darius Monzano. Uh, my name is Darius Monzano. My wife and I are the parents of multiple troll, uh, children that attend and have attended Stewart Hill Academy. I would appreciate if the school would remain open and choose not to be diverted to the two other schools. We have been a fixture in this school for almost seven years. We have donated many things, such as food for past field days, snacks for the pre-K and kindergarten classes, and more importantly, time. Being employed by one of the big four accounting firms, I've taken it upon myself to get the tax team involved in donating school supplies over the past three years. The school is part of my extended family and many families of the community. The enrollment rate has dropped due to COVID, and will most likely bounce back once everything returns to the new normal. I think because there are not as many children as there once was, that you move the students to one half of the building while the other half is remodeled. Then move them to the completed side and remodel the other half. I'm gonna record, I'm going on the record to announce that I will donate personal time to help repair the school, as I have 20 years of the construction experience, and will be able to help, and will be of help to any company that will help in remodeling. Darius Monzano, Sr. Okay, next we have Ms. China Terrell. Uh, I did see you earlier, so if you wanna turn your camera on now, uh, that would be a good time. But Ms. China Terrell, are you available?
Super, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, we can hear you.
I don't have the ability to turn on my camera, it seems like it's disabled.
Okay, sorry, I'm turning that on now. There you go, you can have it turned on now.
Okay, perfect, wonderful, thank you, thank you.
And you'll have five.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. Um, so I'm China Fok Terrell, and I am a, um, in this particular capacity, I am a member of Brown Memorial Park Avenue Presbyterian Church, which is, um, a partner with Utah Marshburn School for the past 20 years. Um, and I have been volunteering at Utah Marshburn School as well. In addition, I'm a Bolton Hill resident, and I'm a candidate for delegate for District 40. And I can tell you that in my professional life, I'm the CEO of a Baltimore-based nonprofit. Um, so I'm a nonprofit commercial developer. And I know that it is extraordinarily challenging, if not, you know, sometimes near impossible, to really successfully recurpose an old, large school. Councilmember Costello had it correct when he said it's about three acres, it's an entire city block. Um, and the subsidy that would be required would far exceed money needed to repair the school, um, and grow its enrollment. And I know that there are other schools identified that children can go to, but in actuality, um, the pathway to school will become even more dangerous. Um, more strewn with broken glass, more littered with trash. Um, and they will have to pass by more open air drug markets than they already do in order to get to school. Um, our community, the communities and nonprofits that serve this school are so united in opposing its closure. Um, I've talked to the leaders of the community associations around the school, including our own. I've talked to, you know, there's, I'm sure you all have statements from, you know, um, No Boundaries Coalition, and from other churches that are also in support of the school. Um, there's just tremendous progress happening there. And so with this testimony, I wanted to make sure to zero in on a couple of facts. There are things at this school that really cannot, that are not replaceable. So, we have an extraordinary Judy Center, um, that's working with moms, with kids, especially teen moms. It is the only certified Judy Center in this area. Um, so to take that away at this juncture, um, would just be completely destabilizing on top of two horrible years of COVID, when people are just coming back. Yes, this is a school that absolutely needs improvement. Um, very few of the kids are performing at grade level. But what's remarkable is that the scores at this school have risen. And so if someone just looks at the aggregate data, they're going to say, well, oh, the, 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 they're not performing well at this school, and something needs to be done, and we should shut it down. But no, because actually, at the younger grade levels, the scores have certainly risen. And so now, where the volunteers and the partners are all focusing, are at the higher grade levels, the fourth and fifth grade levels, where now we're pushing for movement. But the scores have risen at the lower grade levels, what the partners are doing is working. Um, there's restorative practice here, which is extraordinarily dynamic. You know, the school used to be kind of a wild place, you know, where the kids were, would throw things, or didn't not quite know how to express themselves when they were having frustrations. But now it is so peaceful, they use the deer practice, where you drop everything and restore in order to settle their differences. Um, so it's quite peaceful. Promise Heights has been an absolutely extraordinary partner, doing math nights, literacy nights, family engagement. Our church, Brown Memorial, does an after-school choir. Um, they do soaring eagles, uh, learning camp every summer. We have a tutoring program that we've done for like 19 of the past, almost 19 of the past 20 years. Um, the Child First Authority got started with this school through Build. So we finally have a really strong principle that everyone is excited about. Um, and so to kind of take that away now, um, on a, like, in, in a post-pandemic year, um, it's just truly unconscionable. And to only give, and to give the community only 60 days to respond, so to have the announcement right before Thanksgiving, and then, all of a sudden, all of these parents that have so much else happening in their lives, and the community members have to, over Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year, somehow organize to voice their opposition to this closure, quite frankly, it is absolutely heartless. And a decision like this should not be made. I can tell you that as a for-profit, um, excuse me, a nonprofit commercial developer, with a lot of work over in east Baltimore, I saw, you know, that 753 families were moved out of EBDI. And the first thing that they built, once that entire area was cleared and leveled, were what? A school, a playground, and a splash pad. But for whom? They built those things there because they wanted people to come. And if we want to rebuild this community and have people come back into this community, then we have to renovate and rebuild the, the school. And I believe these 200 little lives that are located at Utah Marshburn are absolutely a nucleus that you can build around. Certainly, the 200 lives are more than the zero that were built around at EBDI when we invested all kinds of money for a new school and a new playground and a new splash park. So we really have to pony up and see the same level of investment in this particular neighborhood. And one of the final things that I'll close with is that, you know, I've been volunteering at Utah Marshburn for a while now, and it's such a privilege. But a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to look into the eyes of every single child at the school, because I took pictures, I was an elf, and I took pictures of every single kid with Santa Claus. And I can tell you that these children are not going to understand the, the decision to close their school. They will hear grown people talk about money and repairs. They're going to hear big words like enrollment, capacity, and utilization, but they will not hear love. And they are not going to feel the weight of their worthiness pulling these conversations around them towards what is best and affirming for their little lives. And they don't know that the state of Maryland has more than a $2 billion surplus. And they don't know that when their school gets vacant and boarded up, that it will probably make a difference. Thank you, 10 years. So I really appreciate the opportunity to testify. Thank you so incredibly much. And, um, and together with the community, volunteers, everyone, we're all adamantly opposed to closure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have a, another live comment from Dr. Joan, Joan Wharton. Dr. Wharton, are you online?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you, you have five minutes.
Okay, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you, Dr. Wharton.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Chairwoman Richardson and Vice Chair McFadden, and Commissioner and Chair Emeritus Chinia, and CEO Dr. Santalisis, and, um, the school board commissioners. I'm Joan Wharton, I'm a member of the Cherry Hill Ministerial Alliance and the pastor of Hemway Tukway AME Church in Cherry Hill. And I wanna thank you so much for this opportunity to share some of my feelings about the New Era Academy. I am speaking on behalf of over 12 churches in the Cherry Hill community. As pastors and servant leaders, we are the spiritual heartbeat and pulse of our community. The families look up to us for guidance, direction, inspiration, support, answers, and solutions. As family and individual councils, we want to see the best take place for the community. The ministerial alliance is in support of keeping a high school in the Cherry Hill community. New Era is an institution and model of excellence, culture, relationship, and growth for our youth. It is a home away from home that has been building and caraging, equipping, elevating, enlightening, educating, and empowering our youth for many years. Most of our churches have members that live in the Cherry Hill community. The closing of New Era and not having a high school in the community will affect us in a major way. Therefore, we call on the district to unite with the Cherry Hill community in the following commitments. First, we would like you to delay the January 22, 2022 proposed vote to close New Era Academy. The ministerial alliance is asking that the city schools not vote on the proposed recommendation, but to work with the community leaders and Cherry Hill to talk about other options to preserve the cradle of the college career pipeline in Cherry Hill. Secondly, the ministerial alliance is asking that we keep a high school in the Cherry Hill community. We would like to see the name of that school, the Elijah Cummings Empowerment High School. The late Congressman Cummings was one of South Baltimore's native sons. Keeping a strong high school for the youth and community of Cherry Hill is so important to the social, cultural, and economic life. Third, is the ministerial alliance is asking that you commit and writing to keep career programs in Cherry Hill. The CTE program, which is the Career Technology Program, create pathways to important high-paying careers, and as important, a connection to that cradle to college and career pipeline I mentioned earlier. The Trans-Tech, P-Tech, and the JROTC have become key programs within the community, and various investors have expressed how crucial these programs are to the larger economic redevelopment of the neighborhood. We really want and need the city schools to commit and writing to keep these core programs within Cherry Hill. Fourthly, the ministerial alliance is asking that we keep the students and programs in the Cherry Hill community. I cannot stress enough that we have this dynamic, comprehensive model cradle of college and career pipeline in Cherry Hill community. Yes, we have experienced a few challenges, but this high school program remains a significant resource to the foundation of Cherry Hill. Families in the community want the students to remain within the community. We know that the city schools have some answers to, uh, to fit students at other high schools, such as building portables and moving career programs. However, we want the city schools to look at other opportunities to move our New Era Academy, excellent and exceptional program, to a new high school in Cherry Hill. Lastly, the ministerial alliance is asking for the city schools to build a deeper trust with the community through conversations and discussions of land use. The renewal and revitalization of the Seaman Avenue property is so important to Cherry Hill. Questions like, what is the status of the Cardady Watson Building? Who are the players in South Baltimore who have an interest in Cherry Hill land development? Why can't the buildings be separated? Need answers. So in closing, the youth in our church who have attended the high school are doing quite well in society. They are proud of their alumnus status. We speak loud and clear for a high school to remain in the Cherry Hill community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wharton. Next we have Tara Wammen, speaking live. Tara Wammen, are you available?
Hi, I am available, um, but due to unforeseen circumstances, I won't be speaking tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have an email from Amanda Boyle, which I will now read. Please bear with me. Okay. My name is Amanda Boyle, and I am a teacher at Stewart Hill Academic Academy. I started teaching pre-K there in 2013. When I first started working there, I was not familiar with the area or the school. Over the past eight years, I've come to love our school and the community. Pre-K is my passion, and I love teaching little kids at our school. The memories I have made there will last a lifetime. It's been wonderful watching my kids, as I call them, grow from pre-K to kindergarteners, and then graduate in fifth grade year after year. Hearing about the proposed closure of Stewart Hill was gut-wrenching. I have so many memories of pre-K and kindergarten graduations, where the auditorium was so full with families being with a pride for their children, going on field trips to the punk Going on field trips to the pumpkin farm where our students got to interact with farm animals. Field trips to Port Discovery and the Science Center where our students had a ton of fun learning and having Thanksgiving feast in our classrooms where our students learned about Thanksgiving while eating and trying new foods. I want the younger generation of this community to still be able to share these experiences with us in pre-K. That will not happen, that will not be able to happen if Stewart Hill is closed. Several years ago, our pre-K team completed the MSDE accreditation process and became one of the first schools to be accredited. This ensures that our pre-K program is meeting the high standards of MSDE. All of our students in pre-K have received an excellent education while at Stewart Hill. If Stewart Hill is closed this year, pre-K students will next year will not be able to attend an accredited program. Over the course of eight years, I've built many relationships with families. I've seen younger siblings of students grow older and enter my classroom. And I've also taught many children of previous Stewart Hill students who are now adults. Many of those past students have told me that they had such a good experience here at Stewart Hill that they wanted the same for their child. The thought of this not continuing because of the proposed closure of our school saddens me. The staff at our school, the staff of our school have worked so hard to make sure that all our students are getting the best education possible. Principal Brown has done an excellent job leading our school. She came in the year we went out for the pandemic as it can, and has continued to give the school, the community, her staff and students her best. She truly cares about her staff and students and the community. The thought that our students will have to leave a place they love to go to a new school does not seem fair. They are familiar with our school, our staff and their friends. Students will be split between two schools, one of which is, one of which is a very unsafe far walk. The pandemic has taken a toll on many aspects of life, but shutting down a school while we are still in a pandemic does not seem like a fair thing to do to children and families in our community. Thank you for allowing me to share my memories and experience and I hope you will allow us to continue to build and transform relationships with the community by keeping Stewart Hill Academic Academy open. And that is Mrs. Evanna Boyle and she is a pre-K teacher at Stewart Hill. Okay. One moment. Alright, I'm downloading the video from Miss Audrey Carter. And while that downloads, I'm gonna read an email and then come back to her. Um, so next I have an email to be read from Ms., excuse me, um, from Bernadette Tamako. Uh, my name is Bernadette Tamako. I am a teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary School, number eleven. I appreciate having the opportunity to write a testimony for considerations to keep EMS open. I write it today to voice some highlights of my experiences and concerns against the proposed recommendation to close this amazing school. I've been with my amazing Utah Marshburn family since two thousand fifteen. Each year has made me more and more dedicated to the students we service. I'm the type of teacher who treats my students like my own, which is why I gave one hundred and one percent teaching in the best way I know how. While I do things without agenda to, but to build a culture of kindness and support for these children. Year after year, our students make gains not only academically, they grow as a whole child. How? Because we have grit, reflect and adjust as we see fit. We push through as a team despite the challenges and adversities we face. These challenges are what made us stronger and what makes us fight for what is due for the entire EMS, EMS family. We celebrate no matter how big, small or big our successes are. The students, staff and community partners I work with are my greatest motivators. Why? We are not just a team, we are a family who are trying our best to make it right for these children. Our individually, our individuality combined is what makes us strong. I've seen how community partners and shareholders, stakeholders also put forth the love and service for these children. How everyone make a joint effort to provide the needs of these families and their, and their, these children and their families. I'm not only talking about school material needs, but most importantly, the relationships we have built around the school. Have you ever thought that this school you are trying to close is the one constant foundation of our students' lives? Have you ever thought about the impact of these changes in the midst of pandemic? Closing this school would entail losing the connections and relationships we strive to build for many years. I put together a video representing our early learning team and the amazing work that we do. Look into each of these children's faces and see from our lens why so, why, look, see from our lens are so, why we so deserve to stay open. I think we deserve a chance to bring our numbers back up. How? By providing us equal opportunities to rebuild like our neighboring Twenty-First Century School. If you want to be more successful, give us the building we need to better service our students. Support us more than ever. Thank you for taking the time to read my testimony and watch our video. I'm truly hoping for favorable outcomes to serve our students. Um, I might actually call Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson, did you recall receiving the video? I don't see it, but maybe you got it. Or maybe you sent it to me.
No, I don't see it either. But Ms. Tamako, if you can send it to us, we'll share it with board members.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and that was Ms. Tamako. I'm now going to read, uh, play the video by Ms. Audrey Carter that I just mentioned. Okay.
Good evening, School Board and all in this virtual meeting. My name is Sister Miss Audrey and I am with the People's Association of Oliver Community. And I oppose the recommended closing of Dr. Bernard Harris Elementary School, number two fifty. This school has historic significance in the Oliver community and has served many generations, including myself as a two fifty graduate, my son and also one of my grandchildren. I have worked and volunteered at the school for several years in the past. The report cites low attendance and walls that don't reach the ceiling. I'm not understanding. These are all fixable issues that can be rectified. The Oliver community is preparing for major housing development, which will bring additional families with children. Closing a school and sending our children to Johnson Square and Hartford Heights only exacerbates an already challenging school system that has major attendance, building and common issues. Our Dr. Bernard Harris parents pulled some of their students out of Johnson Square because Dr. Bernard Harris is a better school. In addition, safety will be a major issue as our children and parents will have to cross Hartford Avenue and North Avenue, which are major busy streets. Can we afford to have a child hit by a car? I don't think so. We did a DOT study in the Oliver community and it says that it had more car accidents and more pedestrian incidents and some fatalities along Hartford Avenue. And we don't want that to continue to happen. Also, the mayor's office just announced in his first-year action plan prioritizing ensure that more families have access to quality education. His plan obligates the city to use the millions of dollars generated by the current commission to do so. It baffles me to know that the mayor is pouring money into the city, namely fifty million dollars for violence prevention, victim services, youth justice and community healing. But the school board is closing and cramming children into already compacted schools and thus perpetrating what the mayor is trying to prevent. Now, now is not the time to close schools. We are still in a pandemic. Children are still being sent home for COVID scares. And mask wearing and social distancing are still being enforced indoors. It makes no sense. We are trying to get our children and youth back in school, but yet we are actually closing schools. Why not take the position of using the money and all the resources we have to keep our schools open and manage the five million dollars allotted for absenteeism that is mentioned in the school reports and get our children back into school. This is like cutting off the nose to spite the face where the mayor's trying to do the one thing and the city and the school board is doing something else. The city of Baltimore needs to work together, which includes Dr. Santalise and the school board in helping our children. That also includes providing evidence-based strategies and interventions that will bring our children back to school in a safe, positive and productive environment. Lastly, I say, closing Dr. Bernard Harris is not an option. Thank you for hearing me. To God be the glory. Amen.
Okay, next we have an email to be read from Shante Tucker. Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Shante Tucker and I'm a pre-K parent educator at Stewart Hill Academic Academy. I've been working here since the year two thousand. Over the years, I've built many relationships with the families and communities. I cannot imagine being not, not being part of this community anymore. For the past eight years, I've been working with Amanda Boyle. We have built a lasting relationship not only with each other, but with the families over the years. Year after year, families request us to educate their children. In two thousand nineteen, we were given Lisa Brown as our principal. She came in and changed the culture and climate of the school in a very short time. It breaks my heart to think that we will not be given the opportunity to finish what we started. When thinking of the two choices of schools that the students are given, Frederick Elementary is a very long and unsafe walk for our students. There are many vacant buildings, massive traffic, and it is filled with drugs and crime. I would challenge any of you to come to Stewart Hill and take the walk through the neighborhood of Frederick Elementary to get an idea of what our students will be facing. I sincerely hope you will reconsider closing our school. We deserve a chance to show how great we can be under leadership of Lisa Brown. And that was from Shante Tucker. Okay, next we have another email to be read from Carol Espirito. Please bear with me if I did not pronounce that correctly. Okay. To whom it may concern, my name is Carol Espirito. I'm a pre-K teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary. I'm writing to let you know my concerns regarding the proposed closure of Utah Marshburn. I've been teaching at this school for almost six years. These past years that I've been at EMS, my paraprofessional and I have met and built relationships with parents as well as other families in the community. One of the parents have already shared her intention to have her youngest son be, to be in my class next school year, since I taught her two other children in the past. Back in August, my families were all very excited that school was reopening and that their kids were back to in-person learning. Although parents were not allowed to enter the building for health and safety reasons, they knew that we would take good care of their children. Thankfully, none of our pre-K students cried on the first day of school. It is heartwarming to know that the parents trust us in caring and educating their children and that they appreciated of the family-like atmosphere at our school. My students and I have a, my students and I had a conversation about the proposed school closure during one of our restorative circle times. As young as they are, they understood what was going to happen to our school. They all conveyed feelings of sadness about EMS's closure. They thought about their friends, teachers and other familiar adults in the building. Having been in this pandemic for almost two years now, a lot of the parents, students and teachers are socially, emotionally and some even physically affected by the situation. Closing our school means building new relationships again in a new school community and earn each other's trust during this time that we are all just slowly getting up again and putting back pieces of our lives together. I wish that there would be more time for us to prepare ourselves to be whole again before the decision to close our school. For this reason, I'm against the proposed closure of Utah Marshburn Elementary. Thank you very much for your time and consideration regarding this matter. Sincerely, Ms. Carol Espirito, and she is a, Carol's a pre-K, pre-K teacher at Utah Marshburn. Okay, next we have another email to be read. Okay, um. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, Commissioner and Chair Emeritus Chania, CEO Dr. Santalisis and School Board Commissioners. My name is Captain Vincent Skowar, U.S. Coast Guard, and I'm right as a private citizen. I appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts with you today. Since two thousand sixteen, it has been my privilege to work closely with the young people, teachers and administration at New Era Academy. I work alongside many people who are from the Cherry Hill neighborhood where New Era Academy is located. This has afforded me the opportunity to foster a bond with the new, the young people at New Era Academy. There are no other high school options in Cherry Hill. If New Era Academy closes, the young people from this school will have to travel further from home to find a suitable school. I'm deeply familiar with the internship program supported by the Maritime Advisory Board that encourages the educational efforts of New Era Academy. For six summers, even through the darkest days of the COVID pandemic, I worked with young people from this community. They are motivated and need opportunities. Represented with challenges, they sacrifice and do what is necessary to achieve the goal. If New Era Academy is closed, this internship program would once again have to move to another school. This is very unstable and degrades the, the level of opportunities for young people in the Cherry Hill neighborhood. These young people do not need another obstacle in their path. It was seen wise to delay the upcoming vote on closing New Era Academy in order to allow the Cherry Hill community to explore and share other options that could berv a high school in this neighborhood. Giving time allows further understanding of the impacts and ramifications of closing New Era Academy. Giving time ensures that a more informed decision is made with the best information possible. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. Should you have any further questions, please do not contact me on my cell phone at et cetera, et cetera. Sincerely, Captain Vincent Skowar, U.S. Coast Guard. Okay, next we have Kadir Russell commenting live, uh, Kadir, you available?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have five minutes.
Okay, alright, let me put my, cut my camera on. Y'all can see me? Y'all can see me, right?
Um, not yet, no.
You went out. There you go. You're back with us.
Okay, alright, okay.
Went out again, so it looks like you keep touching, you keep touching something, but we saw you and then you went out.
Oh, it's probably a little difficult because where I'm at, even though it don't matter if you got limited data or a 5G phone, where I'm at, it's still a little difficult.
We got you. We can, we can, we can hear you though.
Okay, cool. So I'm just basically talking off based on how I feel or what I know as a fact. But first, first of all, I'm gonna just say good evening to all the board commissioners. Good evening, Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, CEO Dr. Santa Lisa and School, School Board Commissioners. My name is Quadde and I'm sixteen and I'm in eleventh grade and I'm a student at New Era Academy High School. I would like to share my feelings on the purpose proposed closing of my high school, New Era Academy. The potential closing feels insane because New Era Academy is the only high school in the community that I've been in, I've always been in, in that community. So because a New Era Academy is the only high school in the community of Cherry Hill. Ever since I graduated from elementary school, I've been in that school, like since I graduated fifth grade. When I was in elementary school, I went to New Era Academy, sixth grade, when it was a middle and high school. So, and it was all in the same So, and it was all in the same building, so now that I come back to this school, to this building for my high school days, now it's being taken down from me. That's what I'm not understanding, but it is what it is. I feel terrible about it because history has been made in that school, and some people are comfortable here at that, at my school more than any other school in the city. Now, hear this out. So once New Era Academy has been closed down, let's just say this hypothetically. So if they close down, the population and the Cherry Hill community is gonna, the, the, the population is gonna increase. Then Cherry Hill is gonna become a war zone, so you know how everybody be like, we're trying to stop the violence. So I know this for a fact that once everybody drop out, this is what's gonna happen. So it's gonna become a war zone, people that were at school are now want to become a dropout, and then they gonna become a minister society. Then you gonna wish that the school hadn't been tear down. But once you tear down, everything is gonna be trouble. I think there should be a petition put around the whole Cherry Hill community so people can get a chance, so they can have, you know, the teenagers, the adults, so you can give them a chance to make things right and create options. As people, we should at least try to give up, but we can't let things just be taken from us. We just have to fight for what's ours. What I'm saying that is, we grew up in this community and have life experience in this school. And this school helped us become better people, a better athlete, and a better thinker. One thing I can say is that this school, that it helps me think, listen, and learn, and make better choices for myself, which gives me a chance to become successful. I want to stay, I want to stay and get my education in Cherry Hill community. I would like all of the programs we had to remain in the Cherry Hill community. A lot of my friends have been nervous and anxious about the possibility of the school closing. I hope this can be fixed, but it is what it is. But when money is involved, nothing can be changed. Money makes the world go around, and that's what I wanna say. That's just, that's just coming off of my heart. But, you know, appreciate it. Thanks for letting me share.
Amen, brother.
Thank you very much, Kadir, for your commentary. Okay, next, we have an email from Richard Fredericks. Give me one moment. Actually, Ms. Anderson, can you read forward that one? I do not see that.
I just sent it to you again, Christian.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, Commissioner and Chair Emeritus Chinia, and CEO Dr. Santa Lisa's and School Board Commissioners. My name is Richard Fredericks and I'm the president of the Foundation for Maritime Transportation and Logistics, Inc. I appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts with you today. For the past 15 years, the foundation has supported the TransTech CTE pathway, and most recently P-Tech housed at various high schools in the Baltimore area by investing over $200,000 for school trips, internship, internship support, curriculums, et cetera. For the last six years, both programs were housed at New Era Academy, and we created a strong bond with the school and the Cherry Hill community at large. We support the efforts of the Cherry Hill community to maintain a high school in the community as part of their overall community improvement plan. Since New Era Academy will be operating through school year 2223, we would like to request any final decision to close New Era Academy is made until after the Cherry Hill community has a, has had a chance to sit down with the Baltimore City School Board and make their case to have a high school located in their community. Sincerely, Richard Fredericks, President of the Foundation for Maritime Transportation and Logistics. Please give me one moment and pull up the next, uh, pull up the next email. Okay. Uh, this email is from Tyresha McLinnie. Dear Board of School Commissioners, I'm a teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary School, and this is my second year of teaching. I'd like the board to reconsider the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn. I know the request comes from enrollment and structural issues, however, these issues can be addressed and corrected. We can increase enrollment and provide funds to update the building to where it is sustainable. A buzzword I've heard during a few discussions about this proposal. Additionally, the students and families I serve and the support I receive from E M E S staff each day keep me wanting to come to work. I receive individualized support needed as a new teacher from my mentor teacher, grade-level partner, grade-level team, and other teacher veterans at the school. The support I receive pushes me to continue to provide the best education for my students. As a new teacher, I worry that I will not have the established and high-quality sources of support at a new school. Moreover, I worry that if this recommendation is approved, the board will be removing students from a sense of normalcy that they have not experienced in over two years. With this recommendation to close, you continue to disrupt students' routines, emotional well-being, and the social skills they have gained or are continuing to gain from the regular routines provided by E M E S. This decision is not only affecting our students' routine, but is affecting their emotional and mental health. Research has proven that emotional health affects students' receptiveness to learning. According to McEwen and Sapoloski's research titled "Stress and Cognitive Function", constant stress may cause damage in the hippocampus and frontal cortex of the brain, affecting memory and information process. Closing our school will cause prolonged unnecessary stress and anxiety on many students already dealing with trauma in their home lives outside of school. Prolonged stress appears to reduce the ability to acquire, retain, and recall information, cited in Herr Hardeman's "The Brain-Targeted Teaching Model". I've had students come to me and express they did not want the school to close because they did not want to leave their friends. While developing student learning plans, one of my students' parents also remarked the goal for their child, their child, is to create friendships and build their social skills. Our students' social and support networks will be jeopardized if our students are robbed of the opportunity to stay with this class and instead thrown into an unfamiliar environment. Also, in the proposal to close the school, students will be rezoned. And rezoning students requires elementary school, elementary students, many of which walk to cross significant intersections and walk further in high-crime areas, which is another stress that may impact their receptiveness to learning. Schools should be a place where students do not feel anxiety and stress. E M E S offers the safety for our students. Lastly, please be transparent about what is being done in this process. There are plans to have Baltimore City Recreation and Parks use and take, fully take over the E M E S gym building. The gym is attached to the school building. If the structure of our E M E S building is sufficient for the city's recreation and parks to use at the school, then I wonder why it would be any different for learning during the school day. Perhaps enrollment is the leading factor, which is good news because enrollment numbers can be increased. The Judy Center in our school does outreach each summer to get schools and to get students enrolled in pre-K. We have also recently gotten new school leaderships, so I'm confident we can make adjustments in our outreach and recruitment efforts to increase the number of students at other grade levels. The work that each staff member does at E M E S is essential. Please do not take this opportunity away from our students and us. Best, Ms. Tyresha McLinnie. Okay, uh, I'm looking, Councilwoman Porter, are you available? Councilwoman Felicia Porter, I don't see her in attendance, but... Okay, we'll, we'll come back. I was told Councilwoman Porter wants to come speak, so when she arrives, we'll come to her. Uh, next, I have an email from Georgie Puffer.
My name is Georgie Puffer, and I am part of the Promise Heights organization at Utah Marshburn Elementary School. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. I am writing to voice my concerns against the proposed recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary. This is my first year working at the school, but I've already come to know firsthand how strong this community is and how important this school is for the surrounding neighborhood. I work for Promise Heights within the school, and I work one-on-one with pre-K through secondary students. Not all students have, not all schools have Promise Heights, and it is extremely beneficial that students have this one-on-one interaction and mentorship. In addition to gaining this personalized attention from our staff, Utah Marshburn also has other programs that work individually with students, such as the Literacy Lab. I believe these programs are what makes Utah Marshburn unique and contribute to such a rich caring environment at the school. If these kids are rezoned to other schools, they may not have, excuse me, they may not have access to these amazing programs. It is no surprise that over the past two years, the kids have experienced instability, especially due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, if our students are placed now, if our students are placed in a new unfamiliar school, they will be experiencing so much more instability. We have low enrollment numbers right now, but much of this is likely due to COVID, and our small class sizes are more advantageous for keeping the students safe from this disease. We are still in a pandemic, and if our students were replaced in a bigger school with more kids to a class, this would put them at higher risk of getting sick. By working with students individually, I know that many students have experienced trauma or have challenging home lives. But at our school, they feel safe and welcome. Having a space where students feel safe is so important. Having this space where students feel safe is so important, but at a new school, they may not feel this way. Being forced out of their school where they feel comfortable may cause even more trauma for these kids. Lastly, this is not just a school, it's also a food pantry, it's a Judy Center, it's a Literacy Lab, it's a Promise Heights Center. It does so much good for the community and not just for the students and families that attend. Closing the school would not only have negative effects on the children, but it will also have detrimental effects to the community. This is why I believe the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary should be reconsidered. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and that was from Georgie Puffer.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Porter, are you on? Um... Okay, and if you're on your phone, you need to hit star eight to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Santa Lisa, Chair Jonette Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, and other School Board Commissioners. Um, I, I come before you today to support the community in asking BCPSS to postpone voting of closure of New Era. We would like the proposal to be amended to set a closure for the end of next school year. Despite infrastructure and enrollment issues, we all agree that young people deserve quality education that propels them into living high-quality, high-value lives, not only in Baltimore City but beyond. Key programs like the P-Tech Marathon Program are pivotal to the local economic development and community revitalization of Cherry Hill and South Baltimore. It's imperative that we keep those programs at a high school located in South Baltimore and Cherry Hill. We need safe, equitable development and preserve sustainability for secondary options for my youth, my young, and my youth and young adult constituents, and the legacy of those that will ideally matriculate from the two new 21st century schools in my area. We have significant transportation and public safety concerns related to this closure that has been highlighted by students on this call tonight. Um, this, the postponement of this closure allows my office, city government, and BCPSS, to ensure steadfast partnership, not only with the government, but also the community, to keep a high school in Cherry Hill and in my district. Um, thank you so much for allowing me to provide testimony today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we're going to move on. Uh, next, I have an email to be read from Patricia Proluck. And, um, this is the same, I'm gonna try to, for the sake of time, I'm gonna skip this intro, it's the same one. Good, good, good evening Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, et cetera, so. Good evening, good evening Board members and the CEO. My name is Patricia Proluck, and I've been a board member of the Maritime Advisory Board for the past 12 years. I appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts with you today. For the past year, we've been hearing about what the BCPSS Board Administration want to do with New Era Academy, with the New Era Academy building programs and students. As an individual who has invested time and personal funds to support the Seagull and Pathway Program, I would like to ask you to consider delaying the vote on New Era Academy until you hold a meeting with the Cherry Hill community to discuss how there can be a high school in Cherry Hill now and in the future. Think about the students that go to New Era Academy and how the school has and is a big part of their lives. Working as a volunteer with the students has given me a whole new understanding of student life, especially in a one-parent home with very little resources, the needs are huge. Please think before you act as we need the students, as we need for the students from Cherry Hill to graduate, get a job, and become leaders in the community of Cherry Hill and the city of Baltimore. Sincerely, Patricia Proluck, member of Maritime Advisory Board for the last 12 years. Okay, next we have an email to be read from James Cross, Post, excuse me. Okay. I am strongly opposed to the closure of the Utah Marshburn Elementary School. I'm a board member of BHCA and fully supportive of all the recommendations in opposition to the closure contained in the BHCA letter dated December 11 to be read at this meeting. As a resident of the community located .4 miles from the school and a certified planner with over 50 years of experience, including evaluations of proposed school closures, and not as a formal representative of BHCA, I would like to add the following brief commentary, limited by the requirement for less than 650 words, on why the proposed school closure should be rejected. I conducted a thorough review, including but not limited to presentation materials, documents, and reports referenced by the Baltimore City Public Schools. Based upon this review and analysis, I strongly believe that neither the process and review timeline of public input nor the documentation of technical material for the decision is accurately, adequately, or fairly provided. The time provided for public review and comment and subsequent board review of public comments and decisions is inadequate, inappropriate, and unfair. The timeframe is significantly impacted by four holidays as well as the pandemic. There are limited presentations and work sessions. There are only 29 workdays from the Utah Marshburn Community Meeting until the deadline for submission of written testimony to the board. There are only two workdays for the board to review final written public testimony. There are significant constraints on the size of documents the public can provide. There are significant constraints on the size of documents that public can provide and extremely narrow time windows where information may be provided. The technical analysis is not fairly presented, notice to support the conclusion for closing the school. The vision and goal statement for the proposed school closure do not consider community impact nor the maintenance of community schools. While the challenges facing the Utah Marshburn School are emphasized, there is no similar comparative evaluation of the challenges that equally face the other three related schools. Significant information is provided on the programs and extracurricular activities of the three related schools. However, no information on similar extensive programs and extracurricular activities at Utah Marshburn is provided. There is no evidence of our closing Utah Marshburn will increase student and family access to schools that are closer to their homes. The map of proposed changes to the school zones clearly demonstrate that a number of students will experience diminished access with many forced to cross North Avenue. A comparison of enrollment history, student outcomes, and school climates for Utah Marshburn and the three related schools do not appear to provide any significant differences, which would make Utah Marshburn an outlier and candidate for closure. The analysis did not consider any creative approaches such as co-locating other schools or public facilities and/or selective reconstruction and/or demolition. The primary basis for closure of the school appears to be the building is in poor condition and has serious structural weaknesses. Building condition report provided by BCPSS displayed no building components in poor condition nor serious structural weakness. Nine of the 10 building conditions are rated as "fair" with the roof rated as "good." Fair condition is defined as building components showing signs of wear and tear but still satisfactory and typical abilities in the median of their existing useful life. The fair condition rating is the most prevalent condition in the review of all the schools. There are 50 other school buildings there in poorer condition than Utah Marshburn, having one of our components rated "poor." I believe that was the end of the email, the rest is blank, so that was James Prost. And next we have an email from Virginia Ott. Members of the school board and guests, my name is Virginia Ott. I'm currently a second-grade teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary School #11. I've been teaching in Baltimore City Public Schools for 22 years, I've been at Utah for four. I am asking you to reconsider the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary School at the end of this school year. Utah is a small, strong community school. This school is a guide and light for the community. Our staff go above and beyond to meet the needs of our students. Many offers after-school tutoring, buy snacks and supplies for their students. They do daily check-ins with their families and show the support and awe that our school families need. They find outside sources to give our students everything they need. COVID-19 pandemic hit our families hard. Virtual learning was difficult with glitchy internet at school and at home, lack of devices that work consistently, the knowledge needed to navigate Zoom, Google Docs, Google Classroom, and much more. We were shouted out in our CLN for our parent, student, teacher contacts, and for virtual attendance. With the new norm, our school enrollment has dropped. Many of our out-of-zone students transferred to homeschool, virtual academy, except for several families, and families not into virtual academy opted to homeschool due to health and fear of COVID-19. This has created smaller classes and low enrollment. Our school is not the only one dealing with this change. Hopefully, once COVID is more controlled, things will return to a new normal. Due to COVID-19, no one participated in the B-3 initiative movement where the union went to neighborhoods and tried to get students to re-enroll in the neighborhood city schools. Our Judy Center does this for their program and have been very successful. This is something that can be done with COVID-19 restrictions lessened. The students that are enrolled in our school deserve the best we can give them educationally, but they also feel secure, safe, and loved. The school community has worked hard to develop close family-school relationships. These would take weeks, months, and maybe even years to re-establish. Our students know they can come to us with problems or concerns. They know we will help any way we can. This is based on consistency with our families and staff. Utah's buildings need repair. These things can be fixed. Please reconsider the recommendation to close our school. This school, this community, this staff, and these students and families are all working hard to give their best. Don't take it away from them. Please vote "no" to the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn at the end of the year. Give Utah Marshburn a chance. Sincerely yours in learning, Mrs. Virginia Ott. Okay. To whom it may concern, in 2015, I signed a contract to teach kindergarten at Stewart Hill site unseen. The first time I stepped into the building was during my new teacher orientation, a week or two before the school year would start. I would soon see where I would spend the next seven years, Room 201-S. It's not perfect, as I'm sure you noted on your multiple walkthroughs. The heat blows too strong, my window swings open, and every year I get an invitation of ladybugs. But what you could not have possibly picked up on in your short time in my room were the relationships built with my students and their families, the growth made, the mistakes too, the laughs, stories shared between coworkers, and the pride I have in my school and my students. My first kindergarten class was just graduated this past year and I've never felt more related or old. The time here has not always been easy, but it's always been worth it. S.H.A. experienced a breath of fresh air two years ago in the form of Principal Brown. She came in with the goal to build and transform relationships. When word got out, we had students who transferred out come back to S.H.A. for the new administration direction we were headed. Unfortunately, in our first year, we closed for COVID and wouldn't return till this past spring. Sorry. During the summer, she worked endlessly with the team to increase enrollment, almost 60 students, and expanded our East Soul population by 90%. If this is what she can do in a short few months during a pandemic, imagine what she could do in a year or even the next few years. We had the momentum to rebuild Stewart Hill back to what it once was with the right leader in place. We are finally cooking with gas and I think it is fair to put out our fire now. I have also noted that you would like to send our students to Frederick or Franklin Square. During your walkthrough, did you take the time to realize, did you take the time to actually walk the distance from a house in our neighborhood?
Our neighborhood.
Dark winter. Oh, sorry. At least somebody needs to mute. Okay, thank you. During your walkthrough, did you take the time to actually walk the distance from a house in our neighborhood in the dark winter month to see where it would go, how it would go? I challenge you to do so. You seemed so sure it was safe and reasonable. While you're out there, think about how it would be if you were 10 years old and you were walking with your three younger siblings with you like the Hill family will. Then I want you to do it again in a wheelchair, as one of our parents would have to do, from our housing development all the way to Frederick up the hill. I look forward to hearing the results of your findings. Also, while looking into my family's future options, why does neither school selected offering an accredited pre-K program? Stewart Hill has been an accredited pre-K site since 2017. My recommendation to you is to reconsider our closure. We are on the up and while it may not be an easy climb nor a quick one, we are taking the steps to reinvigorate our school and rebuild enrollment programming relationships. Give us the chance and the time to prove to you what we can be once again. Add every bit of faith that the people in this school and the community around it will do the work. We have been for years and we not plan to stop now. Thank you for your time. Laura Almendy. Okay, next we have another email to be read. Again, please, everybody, please make sure you are muted. So, as I mentioned at the top of the hour, I'm not going to read duplicative language from groups. So, I will just note this email is from Fritz DeGud of the Maritime Advisory Board. And it is, again, similar to, and he's representing the New Era community, and he is also opposed to the recommendation. But again, I'm not going to read this, it's the same language as the other members of the Maritime Advisory Board. So, one more time, just for the public, Fritz DeGud, and it was an email, and he's opposed to the closure of New Era. Okay, and again, yeah, again. Oh, and I also thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for the reminder. Also, just as a reminder as well for members of the public, each individual letter will be shared with the full board. So, even though I'm not reading the full letter, so thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for the reminder. And on that note, this is another back-to-back email from a member of the Maritime Alliance. The name is Captain Eric Nielsen, and he is opposed to the closure of New Era. Okay, this is a similar email, and as I stated, this letter, the board will have this full letter to read at their own, but we are going to keep moving to make sure that we can get through all the names in a timely manner. Okay. My name is Adriana Valtison. Valtison, Valtison, excuse me. I'm a Literacy Lab tutor at Utah Marshburn Elementary. I would like to voice my concerns against the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary. I speak as an EMS community member, not on behalf of other organizations. Throughout my years in education, every organization I've been a part of believed that if something didn't start off perfect, a curriculum, textbook, program, it should tear down and start from scratch. I worked in universities, education companies, and grade schools that have all shared this mentality. It might not seem like closing Utah Marshburn and rezoning students to other schools would be tearing something down and starting over, but please take a moment to see this from the perspective of the people who spend every day there. Utah Marshburn's teachers have spent years building up their team and have come to trust and rely on each other. Our students walk down the hall just to say hello to the preschool teacher they had four years ago. I watch students wait in the cafeteria for their classmates after they have already received their breakfast because they want to walk upstairs with the friends they've known for years. I've listened to the students ask why the school would be closed when so many people love it. Closing the school would mean tearing down the community and starting one over from scratch for all of us. The teachers would have to find their footing on a new team, which could take attention away from their students. The students themselves, who have just returned for their in-person year after the lockdown and for many, their first in-person year ever, will have to start over at a new school, meet all new teachers, make all new friends, go through a months-long transition period, again. Furthermore, Utah Marshburn Elementary has worked with programs like Literacy Lab for years. We support instruction and teaching students to teach in half the time it would take otherwise. We tutors get to know the students, build their confidence, and help them reach their potential across school years. We all know that learning reading skills early makes students more likely to graduate from high school and reduces poverty. Programs like these are crucial, especially when we are still seeing the effects of the pandemic. Two of the three schools to which the board intends to rezone our students do not have a Literacy Lab program. They also do not have a Judy Center, which prepares students and families for kindergarten. Most of them do not have Promise Heights, which supports students and families during transitions throughout their education careers. Closing Utah Marshburn would not just close students and teachers off in their established communities, but would also remove access to necessary resources. What message would this empty school building send to the people of Baltimore? What message does shuffling students, teachers, and staff around different places send, especially when they've only been back in person for one year? Why should anyone who worked hard on this school for so long feel valued in this community if it closes? Why is relocation better than renovation? The board has already sent a message to the schools, staff, and families even before making the decision. You made us jump through hoops to prevent communicating our concerns about a school closure. You have told us that a small school with manageable class sizes designed to make... Excuse me. You have told us that a small school with manageable class sizes designed to make all student voices count is somehow a problem. Prove me wrong, send a new message. Ask the board not to close Utah Marshburn Elementary. Instead, I asked that we renovate the building and plan for any other necessary improvement. We should make an already great school better rather than separating its community, moving the pieces around, and hoping for the best. Thank you for your time, Adriana Valtison, tutor leader/K3 tutor with the Literacy Lab. Okay, next we have a video from Rebecca O'Reilly, and please bear with me as I pull it up.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Riley and I teach first grade at Utah Marshburn Elementary School. I request that the board delay its proposed plan to close our school. The building concerns shared suggest the building is not viable as is for the long term, but thankfully, for the time being, it is viable. With a mind towards promoting and increasing the protective factors in our students' lives, students whose childhood is being affected by the uncertainties and fears of a global pandemic, I believe it would be unnecessarily harmful to close our school at the end of this year. Stability, a sense of belonging, familiarity, these foster student confidence and engagement. At this unique moment in time, please give our children the benefit, the chance to have this stability, to experience the support of, and to continue to develop as active members of this community. At a time when everyone, parents and guardians, children, educators, and school staff are stressed and stretched to limits, as we are realizing the importance of wellness, please consider delaying this closure, which, from what I have read of the closure documents, does not need to happen immediately. It is adding stress to many lives. Additionally, I would like to share that I previously taught for 12 years at a larger school. And when I began at Utah Marshburn, I immediately appreciated the community and community feel of this smaller vibrant school. I understand what I have read about how in this district, budgeting and school programming are impacted for non-large school. I would like to express and for it to be heard that a good number of people, including students, thrive and find comfort, connection, and confidence in schools of Utah Marshburn size. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next we have a live comment from Stephanie Ponza, and I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Stephanie, are you available?
Yes.
Thank you, we can see you and hear you, you have five minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. So, hello and good evening, Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, CEO Dr. Santalisis, and school board commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposal to close New Era High School program in Cherry Hill. My name is Stephanie A. Ponza with Dream Big Baltimore Foundation. Our role is to work with the Cherry Hill community in partnership- Our role is to work with the Cherry Hill community in partnership with the Purpose Built Communities and Cherry Hill Strong to develop a cradle to college and career education strategy. Dream Big is honored to partner with Cherry Hill and the Baltimore City Public School System by providing resources for school-based educational initiatives in Cherry Hill. For the past few years, we've worked in partnership with Cherry Hill Strong and Cherry Hill Community toward a holistic community revitalization effort focusing on education, mixed-income, affordable housing, community wellness, and economic vitality. And most recently, we've partnered with members of the Coalition and Cherry Hill Strong Education Committee toward maintaining a high school in Cherry Hill. This innovative high school in Cherry Hill aligns with the Purpose Built Communities Initiative and part of the community's larger strategy that Baltimore City Public School is a key partner in. And central to the model is, um, is a seamlessly integrated neighborhood cradle to college and career pipeline. Dream Big is just one of the many partners investing time and resources to support this, support the community's revitalization vision inclusive of this cradle to college and career pipeline. To date, the committee, including members of the staff of Baltimore City Public Schools, principals, staff, and community members, created a 10-year education roadmap with a strategic plan to be released in 2020. This effort includes key partners, um, including Cherry Hill Coalition, Black Yield Institute, Rich Program, Youth Resiliency, Enterprise Community Partners, Baltimore City Public Schools, UMBC, SB Seven Coalition, Weller Development, MedStar, and South Baltimore Partnership. As you can see, there are a number of vested partners. In addition to our commitment to act Dream Big, uh, where we've committed 20 years to provide resources for school-based educational initiatives, Baltimore's own philanthropic community has already invested over a million dollars towards supporting Cherry Hill's community revitalization effort. This includes our founder and board chair at Dream Big, who's enlisted many partner companies, um, surrounding, in the surrounding community, including his own and other I T and cybersecurity industry firms towards strengthening the education and employment opportunities for Cherry Hill youth. The closure of New Era only hinders the community's vision for this pipeline from cradle to college and career. The vision of the 2020 Cherry Hill Transformation Plan, the Purpose Built Communities Model, and the significant investments already made by Dream Big and various philanthropic partners, including Baltimore City Public Schools. Two new 21st century schools were intentionally built within Cherry Hill due to the historic lack of investment. The vested interest in Cherry Hill Schools' infrastructure is an opportunity for additional investment in Cherry Hill, not just for education, but in affordable housing, community wellness, health, and economic vitality. This transformational effort that's happening in Cherry Hill is special. It signals a need to change the structures that's created the current condition. So maintaining a high school in Cherry Hill only builds upon this vision for a full school pipeline that starts from cradle to college and career and protects the investment that Baltimore City Schools and so many other partners have already made in Cherry Hill. So not having a high school option for Cherry Hill youth cuts off the seamless transition of education starting in preschool and is a direct disinvestment and, and impacts the education strategy. That's not just, again, focusing on education, but the holistic, um, community chains that's taking place. Therefore, we have several asks. And first is to delay the vote, um, to close New Era and to work in good faith with the community to identify a strategic education plan. This includes ensuring that the community's leadership is at the table to discuss, um, decisions related to the current property. And second, engage with Cherry Hill community to maintain the high school in the community to support this cradle to college and career pipeline. So this means maintaining the J R O T C program, trans tech, and P tech programs, um, and really working with us to create an innovative high school, um, that we would like to name, um, the Elijah Cummings Empowerment High School at Cherry Hill. So I want to thank you just for your time and thoughtful consideration. As you can see, there are numerous partners who are investing their time, um, and money, um, to really make sure that we create, um, in partnership with community, a true high school in Cherry Hill. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have another live comment from Peggy Jackson Jobe. Uh, Ms. Jackson Jobe, are you available?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me? Am I muted?
No, we can hear you just fine. You have five minutes.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry. Can you see me though?
We cannot see you yet, though. We can hear you.
Okay, I just put my camera on, but I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, Commissioner-in-Chair Emeritus, uh, Linda Chinia, CEO Dr. Santa Lisa's, and School Board Commissioners. My name is Peggy Jackson Jobe and I am currently the Chair of the Cherry Hill Community Coalition and the Cherry Hill Community High School Subcommittee. Since March, I've been working collaboratively with the Cherry Hill Strong Education Subcommittee, members of the community, and as recently as last night, the Cherry Hill Alumni and the New Era Steering Committee. And we were trying to find alternative options to the recommendation to close New Era High School. This issue has evoked some passionate and emotional responses, but it's also provided an opportunity for the community to come together, to examine the problem, to look at all possible options, and to seek with one voice, uh, to share the will of the Cherry Hill community. So tonight, as a representative of the community, I've come to share that the Cherry Hill community speaks with one loud, clear voice when we say that closing New Era Academy and moving the students as well as its signature P tech, trans tech, and J R O T C programs to Benjamin Franklin and Digital Harbor High Schools as currently being recommended is not an option that the community is willing to accept without a commitment to consider other viable and acceptable options. Therefore, tonight, I'd like to offer some of the community-generated ideas for your consideration. Delay the vote, as you've heard tonight, delay the vote and work with us. Delay the vote on January the 11th to close New Era by the end of school year 2223 and work in good faith with the community to seek other options. Last month, the Cherry Hill Community Coalition and the Cherry Hill Strong sent the board copies of, of a white paper that envisions a new high school in Cherry Hill, a video trailer that summarizes the white paper, and a two-page paper that lists the community's asks and offers viable, community-centered options to closing the high school. We would love an opportunity to use this time to discuss these options and the content of the paper. Uh, also, we'd like for you to work with us to maintain a high school in the Cherry Hill community, as you've heard, to support the cradle to college and careers pipeline outlined in the Cherry Hill Community Transformation Plan. The Cherry Hill community has partnered with Purpose Built Communities for the revitalization of the total community. And the high school is a significant component of that plan. Closing the high school, moving the students to a rival community, and constructing portables to accommodate our students is not a viable option. Listen to other options and consider the emotional and physical stress that our parents and students will endure if the proposed option is implemented. And then we'd like for you to see our vision and work to maintain the J R O T C, the trans tech, and the P tech programs, our signature programs in the Cherry Hill community, maintain them in the community, and provide written confirmation to rebuild community trust. These are the signature programs in New Era, and they are critical institutional resources that support the economic vitality of Cherry Hill as well as the growth of its students. And then we'd like for you to see us as real partners and ensure that the Cherry Hill community leadership is at the table to discuss the decisions for the use of the real estate located at 2700 Seaman Avenue. Confirm in writing that this property at 2700 Seaman Avenue, the home of New Era Academy, will not be surplus during the planning and proposal process. And ensure that a request for proposal includes agreed-upon comprehensive provisions for a high school to be built on the land. Then finally, build a new innovative high school on that land at 2700 Seaman Avenue. Yeah, and so that we can keep in the community, uh, a high school and allow the community to honor one of South Baltimore's native sons by naming the school the Elijah Cummings Empowerment High School because the late Elijah Cummings is the one who fathered the maritime seagoing program at New Era. Prior, prioritizing, and then I'm closing, prioritizing the building of high school before allowing for additional development of the 2700 Seaman Avenue property will ensure that the community's vision is realized. I thank you so much for your time, and I trust that you will seriously consider the proposed options. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson Jobe. Uh, before we move on, we did receive the video from this burned at Samaka earlier with the Utah Marshburn recommendations. Just in the interest of time and making sure we're gonna honor the five minutes per person. Uh, we're not gonna show the video, but what we will do is, of course, share the video with the full board from the view. And we'll also post the, the video, a link to the video on board docs for any members of the public that want to watch it. Um, so moving on. And I, Ms. Samaka, I do see you just emailed me. I hope you heard that again. We're, while we're not gonna show the video tonight in interest, uh, to make sure we're honoring five minutes, uh, we will share the video with the full board as well as posted for the public to see. Uh, next we have a video from Lisa Lawson. Sorry, there's actually an email and video, so I'm gonna read the comment and then play the video. Uh, "Good evening, Baltimore City Board School Commissioners. I am Lisa Lawson, and the link below is a video of my daughter Camille Green. She's a pre-K student of Utah Marshburn Elementary School. We oppose the proposed closing of the, of the E M S. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Lawson, and I am the parent of Camille Green. And Camille is a pre-K student at Utah Marshburn. She's in Mrs. Spiritus class.
Mrs. Spirit.
I'm sorry. It's Mrs. Spiritus. And we are sending this video so that Camille can let you know how she feels about the proposed closing of Utah Marshburn. So, um, we've had a conversation, and she's also had a conversation in school about how she feels about, um, the school closing. And so we're gonna, come on, we're gonna let Camille say how she feels.
I feel sad because my school's closing and I like my school. We go to school every time of the day, but we were on quarantine. So we would like to say, I don't want my school closed because I like it and I see Miss Dudley because, because I say everything to Miss Dudley, Dudley, because it is a special day that I like my, my school and I wish I could be back in my school for, for days that I like.
Okay, so Miss Dudley is a part of the Judy Center.
Yes, and she's in the Judy Center. And we want to make sure that everybody be safe because there's the coronavirus, so. Bye-bye, guys, and I hope I'll see y'all later. Hi.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Lawson, and I am the parent of.
Okay, uh, next we have Joshua Michael commenting live. Joshua, are you available?
Good evening. I'm here.
Oh, good evening. Okay, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, uh, School Commissioners and Dr. Santa Lisa's. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposal to close the high school program in Cherry Hill. My name's Josh Michael. I'm a former city school's teacher, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as Vice Chair of Cherry Hill Strong, an organization committed to the anti-racist development and self-determined renaissance of the Cherry Hill community. Cherry Hill Strong aligns partners and resources to support the community's transformation through the Purpose Built Communities Model. We focus our work in education, housing, and community wellness. Baltimore City Schools is the lead partner in our education pillar, building a cradle to college and career pipeline. I understand you will hear about the model during a board presentation on January 25th, and we're grateful for that opportunity to share more details then. On January 11th, you will consider closing the high school program in Cherry Hill, New Era, New Era Academy. Last session, you heard from our Executive Director, Zebell Nottingham Lemon, in calling for creative solutions to maintain a high school program in Cherry Hill. And tonight, I echo these comments and highlight two requests. First, delay the vote on New Era on January 11th, and second, engage the community. We call on you to use this moment to build trust. Take time to be thoughtful in this process. Your staff has worked strategically over the past two years to improve the pre-K to eight education program in Cherry Hill as the lead partner. This emphasis on pre-K to eight grades aligns with the Purpose Built Community Model. Yet many questions remain for community members about city schools' commitment to the model in the long term as you consider closing the high school with no stated plan to support one in the future. While the focus on early grades and formative years aligns to the Purpose Built Model, the community has spoken clearly on prioritizing the continuity of a high school program located in Cherry Hill. Addressing future plans for a high school in Cherry Hill can no longer be put off. That's why we come today with two requests: delay the vote, engage the community. The revised staff recommendation moves the closure date back one year to 2023. Given this extension, immediate action is no longer required. Delay this January 11th action. We have to use this time to bring clarity to future plans for a high school in Cherry Hill. Like you, we agree with the recommendation to close the current South Side facility. The facility has been long neglected and now is in disrepair, and it's no longer a viable school facility. Consider decoupling the, the vote on the school program and the facility and explore creative solutions to house Cherry Hill's secondary program elsewhere. We're deeply concerned about low enrollment and poor academic outcomes of New Era Academy. We know that less than 20% of Cherry Hill eighth graders choose to go to New Era. That indicates a broken education pipeline in Cherry Hill that City Schools has entered into partnership with the community to address. Given the systemic oppression of historically black Cherry Hill, diligence and deliberation must be taken to ensure equity is centered. By design, city officials before you intentionally segregated this robust black community and have systematically limited institutional resources. As a district, you've committed to disrupting and dismantling inequities. The Equity Policy notes that city schools will allocate resources to replace those inequitable practices, systems, and structures with new ones to ensure that we provide equitable education and environments to children and families of color. We ask you to consider, through a frame of equity and anti-racism, have the district's investments in this Cherry Hill High School meaningfully replace the legacy of inequitable and disinvestment in this redline community? And has this effort to improve the Cherry Hill High School resulted in meaningful repair and restoration? Instead of restoring and repairing, the proposed recommendation, absent further commitments, disinvests critical institutional resources without a clear future plan. Further, the staff's proposal reallocates these critical resources from historically black Cherry Further, the staff's proposal reallocates these critical resources from historically black Cherry Hill to two adjacent historically white communities in South Baltimore. In the face of a low-quality high school program in Cherry Hill, you have the opportunity to disrupt decades of disinvestment. We know keeping New Era open alone does not solve the problem of an under-enrolled, low-performing high school program in a building in disrepair. Instead, we ask you to join us in charting a new transformational path. The stakes are high. Community trust is on the line. We ask you first, delay the vote and then engage the Cherry Hill community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Joshua. Next, we have an email to be read from Walter M. Howard. Um, and actually to address one of the questions in the chat, I'll just say I was about to type another answer, but I'll just say it out loud as well. Um, we will be sharing all the tests, every, all the tests, everyone that signed up within the, um, window will get a chance to either have their email read or comment with the aforementioned exception of those that are duplicative and/or form letter, so. But we will be reading all testimony received tonight within that window. So I'm gonna pull up the email. All right. Dear Board of Commissioners, please do not close Utah Marshburn Elementary School eleven. Or if you must, please delay the closure by two years to give families in the community more time to evaluate the options. I do be, I do hereby apologize to the Department of Facility Design and Construction. They have shown us that the building has problems that the budget cannot afford to fix. But the building has been listed even recently as in fair condition, so we do not need to rush this process. You're condemning a fifty-five-year-old building after replacing the roof, the boiler, and the elevator. It just doesn't make sense. And it really doesn't seem as if alternative solutions were explored. Approximately six hundred and fifty people are having their lives changed significantly. You know adding a half mile to the commute is a hardship people who are struggling. The case has been made that children are already crossing North Ave and pencil the avenue by choice in order to attend out-of-zone schools. But the families at Utah Marshburn are not being given a choice. They are being forced to migrate. The pandemic is not over. Familiar surroundings and the community tires are very important, now more than ever. We hope the Judy Center can be relocated so the process, progress made is not lost forever. Community members and staff don't feel like they got adequate notice about the recommendation to close. We feel like we're being railroaded. Additionally, the board sign-up is prohibitive and the process of shared feedback is not sufficient. A three-to-five-minute public comment period is insufficient to begin to describe the impact on our community. Holding two two-hour meetings to allow the public to share their, share the impact of the recommendations on four school communities is not enough time. Thank you for doing the right thing, Walter M. Howard, volunteer neighbor and Utah Marshburn community member. Okay, uh, next we have an email to be read from Dr. Laura Dykes. My name is Dr. Laura Dykes and I am a community member who serves on the Edu- Education Committee of the Southwest Partnership. I writing in opposition to the proposed closing of schools in a pandemic. And particularly, I strongly oppose the closing of Stewart Hill Academic Academy. Stewart Hill Academic Acad- excuse me. Stewart Hill Academic Academy, in conjunction with Charles Carroll Barrister, recently held a recently held a Read It Time competition and the students read over twenty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-six hours. Community members donated over fourteen hundred dollars for prize money and to support the schools. This is just one small example of the many wonderful Richmond activities and community support of Stewart Hill Academic Academy. One of the reasons stated for the proposed closure of Stewart, S H A A, was the small school size. However, S H A A, small size is a strength, especially in the middle of a pandemic. Absolute parents pay a premium for small class sizes, nurturing environment, and after-school programming. To punish the students of S H A A for attributes highly sought by the well-to-do is cruel and wreaks of inequity. Further, the news, the federal government, and academic researchers have been sounding the alarm about the lack of affordable childcare and the need of childcare to allow parents to work. S H A A has after-care programming not available at other schools. Closing S H A A will put parents and guardians' jobs at risk as they will no longer have access to the after-school care. Lastly, schools should not be closed during a pandemic. The federal government has provided the city with millions in federal relief funds that can, that can be used to remedy any structural deficiencies in the building of S H A A. Like the eviction moratorium, there should be a school closure moratorium during the pandemic and its aftermath. If the city of Baltimore cares about fixing the problems associated with redlining, systematic racism, and decades of under-investment in Southwest Baltimore-area schools, I urge you to please keep S H A A and all schools open. And that was from Dr. Laura Dykes. Okay, next we have a live comment from Jules Howie. Jules, are you available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Richardson, and indeed, protocol has been established, so all of you potentates, you know who you are. My name is Jules Dunham Howie. I'm Director of the UPC Westside CDC, Member of the Historic Marble Hill Community Association, Member of Bethel AME Church, and Resident of the Historic Marble Hill Community. Utah Marshburn Elementary School is two blocks from my home. So I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the closure of Utah Marshburn Elementary School. Upton is a community of promise that is in the midst of a renaissance. We have major development underway within the community. A hundred and ten new households have been brought online within the last twelve months, including Marshall Gardens and new house, and new row houses renovated. Another seventy-five homes are in the pipeline for homeownership within the next twelve to eighteen months. And the rehabilitation of pedestal gardens will be another two hundred and fifty units online within the next three years. We know that neighborhoods with good schools are sustainable and are an excellent draw for maintaining homeownership. There is over seventy million in investment underway in the community and another one hundred million on the horizon to fulfill the community's twenty twenty-six Upton Master Plan, which includes having robust community schools. This is a community of positive growth and will yield increased school enrollment. Marble Hill and Upton are communities that are attracting new families and one of our biggest assets is our schools. We need the Board of School Commissioners to invest in rehabilitating Utah Marshburn Elementary School, not closing it down. This should be a Build Back Better school. And according to the Year Three of the Twenty-First Century School Building Plan, Utah Marshburn was slated for rehabilitation. How can you close a school that's slated for investment? That seems oxymoronic and disingenuous at best. What else should we, which, what else should we, another prominently African-American neighborhood in Baltimore City, expect? Disinvestment versus investment, per usual. That seems to be what we are worth to institutional structures of power. Discounting the mayoral plan focused on equity and inclusion. I share the concern mentioned before that the community was first notified of the decision to close Utah Marshburn on November tenth, twenty-one. This decision has shocked the community and honestly, is not a community-centric approach to making decisions that impact families, children, and communities. A rushed decision, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, will shortchange the ability for community to be engaged in the process of working with the school board, school, and families to address the enrollment and deferred building maintenance. Upton requests that you defer the decision to close the Utah Marshburn School for at least eighteen months and allow the community to work in partnership with the school board, the Utah Marshburn School, parents, families, and public and private partners to reimagine investment, have time to develop, to develop a viable investment plan, and cultivate needed resources to meet the deferred maintenance needs and increased enrollment. In closing, we implore the Board of School Commissioners to rethink the construct. Invite partnerships. And several of us tonight have testified about we have to work in partnership with our institutions such as the School Board of Commissioners. So invite partnerships to address the issues and make decision in partnership with all critical stakeholders. Don't be an island in community. Community has no place for islands. And quite frankly, the community is the continent. And it is a continent that is diverse and rich in resource and one that we want to be in partnership with in making decisions. So the community wants to be in partnership with you, Board of Commissioners, as you consider these decisions and know that we will bring the resources. Not only will we find them, but we will bring them to meet the needs of Utah Marshburn. Thank you for your thoughtful and hopeful, hopefully favorable consideration of this request. Sincerely, Jules Dunham Howie, on behalf of the Upton community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining, Ms. Howie. Uh, next we have an email from Nazenga Evenly. Uh, dear to whom it may concern, dear to whom it may concern. As a parent at S H A A since two thousand and, uh, for the record, that is Stewart Hill Academic Academy. Think I'm getting that by now. As a parent at S H A A since two thousand sixteen, I have three children that attend there now. I have volunteered there. I feel that S H A A is a great school for the area. The kids in the surrounding area don't have to walk so far. It's not, it's, there are no drug or violence. It's no drug or violence at either corner of the school. It's safe for the kids to walk home. We have A C and heat in the building. The students are comfortable. The school buses that transport the children are organized. We have a before-and-after program that is awesome. Catholic Charities is in charge of our Head Start program. All the kids are known by all the teachers and all the staff in the school. I feel S H A A is. I feel S H A A is organized for our students. I'm assuming that's organized for our students. Why should our kids have to leave and stall over and be put in danger? If North Ave, Baltimore City School Headquarters, get in contact with the Union Square Community Committee, they will help in getting the windows replaced and the roof replaced, so our S H A A kids don't have to be relocated. They did an awesome remodel with our auditorium and also our library. If they reach out, they would not have a problem helping out. Sincerely, Nazenga Evenly. And that is the Stewart Hill community. Okay, uh, next we have a video from Tony Scott.
Good evening. My name is Tony Scott. I'm the Executive Director for the Southwest Partnership. We are a coalition of seven neighborhoods and six institutions working to improve the quality of life here in Southwest Baltimore. The, uh, recommended closure for Stewart Hill Academic Academy impacts three of our seven neighborhoods. First, Union Square in Montclair and also Franklin Square. And these are all neighborhoods that are within our coalition. Tonight, Southwest Partnership is actually celebrating its annual meeting, um, which is why I'm sending this video testimony in. Uh, but this is a time that we, uh, usually celebrate the investments and accomplishments, um, of how we're bringing back these neighborhoods. This year alone, we leveraged over three million dollars in rehabbing housing on Gilmore Street, actually. Uh, just one or two blocks north and south of Stewart Hill. We are celebrating over one point five million dollars in state and city subsidy to make these houses affordable to families living in our neighborhoods. And we're celebrating over half a million dollars of new investment on West Baltimore Street, just a block away from Stewart Hill, all dedicated to helping small minority and women-owned businesses reopen, recover, and thrive from this pandemic. But none of these investments matter if our families don't stay. Families aren't going to stay in communities where their kids have to walk from Gilmore Street to West Side Shopping Center just to go to school. Uh, families aren't going to stay in communities that are losing critical services like language access for their kids or, uh, Head Start early education programs that benefit not just the child, but also working parents, um, helping them to keep regular hours and employment. Uh, families aren't going to relocate and move into a community that is actively losing schools and services. Families stabilize neighborhoods. And by taking away Stewart Hill, you are causing the decline of our neighborhoods. Like some of the other schools here tonight that you're considering, uh, these schools aren't surrounded by tons of vacancies. These are schools that are in communities that are making a comeback. And the city of Baltimore has invested a lot of resources and energy and capital into ensuring that comeback. Closing Stewart Hill sends the message that our communities and families are not worth investing in, in this part of town. And so I ask you to please be a partner in rebuilding our communities by keeping Stewart Hill open. Thank you.
All right, we have another video from Heather, Heather, Heather Kangas, also of the Southwest Partnership.
Hi, my name is Heather. It's Heather Kangas. I am a resident in Baltimore City of the Pictown Neighborhood. And I'm also a board member of the Southwest Partnership. Specifically, I am the Housing Committee Chair. And I wanted to submit verbal testimony in support of keeping Stewart Hill Elementary School open in our neighborhoods. Um, Stewart Hill is a vital asset to our community, to the seven neighborhoods of the Southwest Partnership. I'm also speaking to you today as a licensed clinical social worker and I specifically work in youth mental health. As we have seen in the last, um, over, over a year now, due to COVID nineteen, public schools in particular are assets for youth and youth mental health and for family mental health and well-being. They offer so many services that are needed so that youth can really thrive in their day-to-day lives. Specifically at Stewart Hill, what we have is a community school coordinator. Um, we have food distribution. Um, lots of services for not just the students who are there who might, you know, utilize Head Start programs, but also for the families, um, who live in the surrounding community and the community members at large. And that is an important investment and asset to our community. And for the work that my committee is doing in the Southwest Partnership, which is trying to attract people to wanna live in our neighborhoods, but also to retain people to live here, we need strong public schools. And if we don't have strong public schools and strong financial investment in public schools, we're not going to have other investments that want to come to these neighborhoods. And we've already had investments in the neighborhood due to the fact that we do have, um, this school currently in the community. And I would hate for that not to be here in the future for all of the families who currently live here and the families who aren't going to live here. So please keep Stewart Hill open. and the families who aren't going to live here. So please keep Stewart Hill open. Please support our families in our seven neighborhoods of the Southwest Partnership. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Uh, next we have an email to be read, which I am pulling up. All right, this email is from Brian Sturdivant. Sturdivant, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, uh, MSW. Uh, I write today on behalf of SHAA Community Partner, University of Maryland Baltimore. UMB works with numerous schools within a mile of its campuses as part of its anchor institution strategy in West Baltimore. We also work in support of the Southwest Partnership, an umbrella organization composed of seven contentious, contentious communities bordering the campus and lead agencies for community schools in the area that include Stewart Hill Academic Academy. Our role as an anchor institution in this neighborhood is to try and lift up the voice of the community we are part of. Given that, we urge city schools to take into account the augry being put forth by the community and work towards a solution that satisfies the needs and concerns of our neighbors. And again, that was from Brian Sturdivant, from University of Maryland Baltimore. Uh, next we have another email to be read. And this is joint testimony from Gray Maggiano and Ashia Parker, from the No Boundaries Coalition. To whom it may concern, as leaders of community institutions on either side of Utah Police, we feel it was important to jointly express our concern about Baltimore City Schools' recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary. This Grand Avenue has long served as a dividing line between white Baltimore and black Baltimore, with residents on both sides fearful of crossing to the other side alone. Recently, however, there have been signs of hope at the corner of Utah and McMecon. It was here that the No Boundaries Coalition began as a block party to connect two deeply divided communities. More recently, the renovation of the former Memorial Apartments into Linden Park Apartments, serving low-income seniors in Baltimore, the opening of the Jordan and now the groundbreaking for the Unity Hall, a community arts and engagement center on which we both sit on the board. Another developer is planning to redevelop the Pedestal Garden Apartments into a mixed-income and mixed-use development. All of this has at its center Utah Marshburn and the promise, according to the school district's own plan, that will be rebuilt or substantially renovated to serve children from this community. Instead, the school district has moved very quickly to close the school with little notice, giving only the time between Thanksgiving and New Year's for public comment. Make no mistake, we agree with the district's assessment that the building is substandard and that the school has lagged behind other schools in terms of performance and enrollment. We also believe that most of the blame for this lies to the district itself. The community has surrounded the school with support, including tutoring programs, the Judy Center, new programming at the Christmas Addicts Recreation Center, and the support of University of Maryland's Promise Heights Program. Historically divided communities have been working at the grassroots levels for years now to revitalize this corner of Baltimore. And we are witnesses to the unprecedented engagement and support from white and black Baltimore alike. But we can't do it alone. We need the city and the school district to pull their weight. We need them to keep Utah Marshburn open and to invest real money to make the school the Central Business Community deserves. And that's from Ashia Parker, the Executive Director of the No Boundaries Coalition, and the Reverend Gray Maggiano, the Director at Memorial Episcopalian Church. All right, uh, to whom it may concern, uh, my name is Valier Whitaker. I've been employed by BCPSS for fifteen years, two of those here at Stewart Hill Academic Acad- Academic Academy. I write to ask that you allow SHAA to remain open. Becoming a staff member at SHAA has been one of the most rewarding experiences since being employed by BCPSS. I cannot say enough about the phenomenal woman who leads our school, Principal Brown. After being offered a position at SHAA, the first thing I noticed was her ability to articulate her vision for moving Stewart Hill forward during a pandemic. We were encouraged by Principal Brown's transparency and determination to make this the best possible experience for staff. Sorry, somebody needs to mute. All right, thank you. After being offered a position at SHAA, the first thing I noticed was her ability to articulate her vision for moving Stewart Hill forward during a pandemic. We were encouraged by Principal Brown's transparency and determination to make this the best possible experience for students, staff, students, and families. As a team, we worked together to put a plan in place. Stewart Hill runs like a well-oiled machine. Everyone knows what is expected, and under her leadership, we get the work done. Our school is located in a very nice area. Our parents feel safe walking their children to school. Teachers feel safe taking our children outside to play. There's a parking lot so that the staff will not have to take all the spaces from the neighborhood residences. And the park is a beautiful place to take children as they look for plant and animal life during science lessons. I've watched Union Square residents planting and pruning plants when driving through the area. I cannot say that for the areas around Franklin Square or Frederick. School-based staff attend professional developments so we can learn how to deal with children who have suffered from ACEs. Those practices that we use to keep our children safe emotionally and try to avoid triggers, often unsuccessful when children are with adults that they know and trust. Uprooting children from a place where they feel safe, heard, and valued will most certainly be considered an ACE. This is not good for our student population. According to the document that went home earlier, Franklin Square Elementary/Middle School will be getting window units. We have central air in this building. We do not have to deal with units that overheat and leak. Who will keep our babies safe as they walk through drug-infested streets and areas where prostitutes are working? Many buses are going to pick them up on those days when the temperatures are so low that they only, that those who only have hoodies will have to stay home from school. None. Those children are going to have to stay home. Let's talk about gang trouble. How are our fifth graders going to survive when they enter a school in another area with gangs who patrol the halls? Who are our children going to come to in a strange place? I believe that you truly think you're a propos- I believe that you truly think that you are proposing is what is best for the school system, but let's focus on the children. I can assure you that more harm than good will be done to our children and families in this community who we care so much about. I'm asking that you reconsider. We do not need to continue to pay millions of dollars for new schools when those funds can go a long way fixing the buildings that we already have and keeping communities together. We do not need to overcrow classrooms with thirty or more children, especially during a pandemic. Our children already have technology. They are happy and they are safe. Respectfully submitted, BK Whitaker. Okay, our next email, our next, uh, commentary is an email from Fannan Hill to Chairwoman Richardson, Vice Chair McFadden, CEO Dr. Santalisis, and School Board Commissioners. We write you today to express our grave concerns about the proposed closing of New Era Academy. Since two thousand ten, the Youth Resiliency Institute has introduced Cherry Hill residents of all ages to high-quality arts education, positive youth development, and culturally responsive engagement. Over the years, the Youth Resiliency Institute has had the privilege of engaging New Era Academy students through significant community organizing projects. During every Youth Resiliency Institute engagement, New Era Academy students consistently demonstrate intensity of spirit and articulation of opinions in respect of with tact and understanding. Equally important, New Era students play a pivotal role in Cherry Hill's cradle to college and career pipeline through formal and informal mentorship of elementary and middle school students. A complete cradle to college and career pipeline in the Cherry Hill community must include a high school program. As such, we ask that you maintain a high school in the Cherry Hill community. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Fannan Hill, Executive Director of the Youth Resiliency Institute, and Navasha Daya Deputy Director of the same. Okay, um, next we have a live comment from Carrie Fulton. Uh, Carrie, are you available?
So I am. Thank you for, um, uh, for the opportunity to speak with you all today. Uh, my name is Carrie Fulton. I'm a parent of a student at Utah Marshburn Elementary School in the historic Upton neighborhood. I'm also a new homeowner in the neighborhood. And so I resonate with a lot of the factors that have been brought up about the abundance and also the possibilities in a neighborhood where our students can literally walk down the street and see Thurgood Marshall's home. Now, when I think about the closure of Utah Marshburn Elementary School, I'm very deeply saddened. And, um, I know my son is also because of the community that surrounds that school and the love that the teachers and the faculty have for our students. The classes are small, but that works, especially for our students as they're coming in from almost two years of being out of the classroom and being stuck at home and not having an opportunity to really engage. Now, the socio, uh, socio-emotional factor of that, of being able to readjust is one thing. And there's also the realities that we are in a pandemic, as the young pre-K, um, sister said uh, earlier today, who, uh, who commented. As I think about this, I also want to reflect on some of the deeper institutional issues that come with closing a school that sits on Utah. Um, when I think about my son said, I want to go to Mount Royal, which is a school about three blocks away from Utah Marshburn. And it is so much better resourced. The rec center is better resourced. The playground is better resourced. It is also overutilized. So when we talk about options in my community, um, the, there's a lot of overutilization of the quality schools and not enough investment in schools like Utah Marshburn that can be, um, real capital for our community. Real things for our community. We are coming back and we're now in January getting our after-school program back, which is such a critical factor, especially for working parents. And that is one of the reasons why so many parents weren't able to come back, because there wasn't aftercare. And so being able to get those resources is so important. Not only would I say I don't want the school to close, but I also would say that this decision should be postponed. The process of having to try and get people together on short notice, the meetings were held in the middle of the day when many of our parents were working, so they didn't have a lot of time to get the information, to meet with the school board as much as possible. To extend this out, even if it's eighteen months, even if it's a year, to say, let's wait, see what we can see after this pandemic is over. See what's happening, especially with development in our community, which is such a changing and diverse community. And I also don't want to see another vacant in, in my neighborhood. I live on a block where we had a fire because of the vacancies, and now three families are without home because of the vacancies that are owned by DC, I'm, I'm sorry, by Baltimore City Government, which is a problem. So we're talking about adding more surplus to Baltimore City, which means another vacant, which means more blight, which means more things that my son is going to have to look at and say, why isn't the city investing in my block? Why isn't the city investing in my neighborhood? Why can't I have a school that looks like that? And we shouldn't have that for any student. They should all have the opportunity to succeed. And they're seeing success in Utah Marshburn. So I hope that you all invest in my son, invest in these schools, and continue to invest in this city in the way that it should be. Um, and as my other friend said, it is a build-back better school. We deserve not only city investment, but federal investment, and we can get it. And we have a community that's willing to try. We just need y'all to give us the time to make it happen. So thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Uh, give me one moment. Okay, uh, next we do have a video and a, uh, email submission. I just want to be clear that the email, I just checked the email. It is only four hundred words, so it does fit under our limit. So I'm going to just read the email and play the video since they, um, adhere to time limit. Okay, so this is the email, uh, from Andrea Gillan. Uh, this year, more than any schools are working to recover from, cover, recover from the effects of the pandemic. And SHAA has been on track to do so, such as recovering part of their enrollment and hiring a full-time ESOL teacher. But SHAA compared to other schools is not just a school for students and their families, but rather a critical space for the community. Offering everything from programming space for Sewebo Community Church and B-triple-C to working towards building a computer lab accessible for the community. When thinking about closing SHAA, one needs to think about the effects it will have on the ecosystem of the Union Square and Montclair communities as a whole. How taking away one major component of the community can cause ripple effects for those beyond the school. The tight-knit neighborhood school is critical to communities. It bridges generations and makes education more accessible, creating a support system of families, community partners, students, and the school to ensure that students are receiving the best education and care they could receive. Closing SHAA means disrupting these bonds, making education less acceptable. Excuse me. Making education less accessible, such as the increased distance to school or loss of strong ESOL and before aftercare programming, and showing the SHAA students that the communities and connections that they built do not matter to the city. The community school model is one of many Baltimore City schools are working towards, attempting to re-center their communities around a school that will support families beyond academic needs. SHAA is already doing that. Whether that be regular food distribution or GED ESL programming, centering community resources in a high-contact institution makes them more accessible, equitable, and supportive of the interconnected community. National research, including research presented in the Education Reform Court cases of the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, have always advocated for the strength of the neighborhood school. It ensures education is a resource for all and shows students that their neighborhood community is invested in them and their future, thus encouraging achievement. There have been no support systems in place for families who will suffer as a result of the closure of SHAA, and there is no guarantee there will be any in place by the end of the school year. The SHAA community, like many others, has dealt with the COVID nineteen pandemic and disinvestment from the city, but continues to advocate for the students and families they serve. but continues to advocate for the students and families they serve. Keeping SHA open means keeping resources and education equitable and accessible to those that have wholeheartedly committed to growing and elevating their community. Uh and now I'm gonna play the video that was submitted as well.
Uh my name is Tristan. I'm eleven and I'm in the seventh grade. And I do not want to school to close, cuz I want to be, I won't get to see my favorite teachers. And I would have to go to a school far away that I don't know. I've been here for three years. In Stewart Hill, it's it's amazing. These teachers that help me relax when I'm angry, feel upset. So that's when I'm feeling bad, I do not want to school to close.
Uh my name is Rashad. I'm eleven and I'm in the fifth grade. The reason I don't wanna go to school is because it's quite weird. I think I'm a punk here, I should be a punk here. And I like my friends here, and I won't be able to see my favorite teachers and stuff like this. And um like if I have anger problems, um the teacher, whatever, or my anger, the other, I would think at a different school, they'll be able to help me. And um my favorite um person to help me calm down is right. And then like my good school person is Mr. Ruck. He's my favorite, he's my favorite. I'm gonna just never find it. And I and I don't want to go outside with my friends.
And my name is Caitlin. I'm ten years old. I'm in the fifth grade. And I don't want the school to shut down because if you lose your friends, if you, in the same school that she was at, your friends, you won't be able to see her, she's visiting. So, and I don't want the school to shut down because I like the school, I'm living in school. So, I'm not really been a brother, a father of the school, so that's why I don't want the school to shut down.
If Stewart Hill, I couldn't make a academy closed, I would have to walk a long distance to another school. I feel safe walking here, but like many other schools, I don't really feel safe walking there. But I don't know what my family, my walking, but I I know, I'm walking here, Stewart Hill. If um if I walk like to a different school, like this school is closer, it's like the closest school to me. So I'll try to like walk down here, be faster, quicker, like I'll walk to another school. I think Stewart Hill is because it's safer for me cuz I don't wanna have to walk all the way over there for a long distance. Um or the Atlantic, have to go a long way past my, past my house to go to another school. You don't let go, I really don't wanna go to a different school because there's a lot of hurdles. And and it's like people that can act. And there's a whole lot of crimes, faith, me walking to a different school, the neighborhood and stuff, right there by the school. I don't think it's safe, but people here, they're like, on and stuff, and I don't think it's safe. And I do walk into Stewart Hill, that's why I don't want to go to Stewart Hill. I wanna stay here. But this is why, I just don't want to walk to Stewart Hill. I'm like, I have to walk to Stewart Hill. I'm just like not gonna walk to Stewart Hill. Have a bad ass, I don't wanna have that.
Alright, next we have an email to be read. Alright, and this email is from the Bolton Hill Community Association. I'm submitting this for later to be read at the December fifteenth special work session of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. As President of the Bolton Hill Community Association, I'm conveying to the Commissioners that the BHCA Board of Directors voted on December seventh, two thousand twenty-one to oppose the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary School number eleven. For years, the Bolton Hill community, including volunteers affiliated with the neighborhood's Brown Memorial Presbyterian Church and Memorial Episcopalian Church, have tutored students, volunteered in classrooms, and organized a student choir at Utah Marshburn. BHCA asks that the Commissioners reject the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn at the end of this school year for the following reasons. We desire to support our neighbors' parents who are already struggling and don't deserve the inconvenience, upheaval, and added stress. We believe that the disruption of the lives of vulnerable students on short notice during pandemic will be counter to educational goals. We do not believe that any school should be closed with less than a year's preparation. We believe the school system should minimize the number of elementary school students crossing the busy streets of North Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. We reject the premise that the students should pay the penalty for faulty instruction and or neglected pass maintenance of the school. The recommendation fails to recognize the impact of two hundred and seven new units with five hundred fifty-four bedrooms slated to be built by two thousand twenty-five on the site of Pedestal Gardens, immediately adjacent to the current school. Relationships and support provided by the Judy Center in Promise Heights out of the University of Maryland Social, University of Maryland School of Social Work will be lost. Fail to appreciate the significant turnaround potential associated with recent school leadership changes. Probable loss of the Christmas Attic's Recreation Center and its social support structure at the school is closed. Problems associated with a three-acre vacant lot, the return of open-air drug markets, graffiti, trash, and rats. Instead of closure of Utah Marshburn, BHCA would like to see the Commissioners and Baltimore City Public Schools redouble efforts to support the school, build a stronger relationship with the neighborhoods in Promise Heights, and offer full wraparound services and trauma-informed support systems to the entire Utah Marshburn community. Sincerely, David, sincerely David Nawad, uh BHCA President. Alright, um next we have an email from Janice Atkins. I'm a concerned citizen that know many of the students and some of the teachers that attend Utah Marshburn Elementary School. The teachers are diligent in keeping the kids safe both during and after school hours. I'm also familiar with that area and the blatant drug traffic that goes on every day, especially near Dorothy I-Hight Elementary. Drug deals are not being done near or on school property of Utah Marshburn. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but not on Utah Marshburn property. But in closing Utah Marshburn, you are putting our kids in potential danger. I just ask that you put yourself in this community's shoes. Would you want your child put in that situation? The parents in this community want the best for their kids as you would want your for your kids. I'm proposing that you do not close Utah Marshburn for the upcoming school year. Janice Atkins. Alright, we got another email. Okay, this is from Alaric Knight. Uh my name is Alaric Knight, and I'm a special education teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary School. I vote against the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn at the end of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. This is my second year at Utah and my second year as a teacher. Starting a teaching career in the beginning of the pandemic was very challenging. Working with the students, I saw the resiliency that is needed to go through the initial difficulties of virtual learning. The students have continued to persevere while being back in the classroom full-time. This is all done through the support of the families, partners, and community. Utah Marshburn is a staple in the community. Our students are enduring many challenges while navigating through the COVID pandemic. The decision to close the school will be another letdown for students. Many of the students at Utah have attended through pre-kindergarten or kindergarten, will be forced to attend an unknown school while still getting accustomed to this new normal. Through the pandemic, one thing that has remained is the community of Utah Marshburn, a small school with a big heart. In closing, I vote against the recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary School at the end of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. And that is from Alaric Knight, Special Education Teacher at Utah Marshburn. Okay, we have a video next.
Go.
Um I'm sad because the building is closed.
Is closing?
Yeah.
And why are you sad that E M E S is closing?
Because I love school.
So you love the school? So what should we do to keep it open?
Um.
Look here.
Um um, we got to um tell them we wanna keep it open because we love school.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay, that's you. That the school is closing.
I think I miss the best school.
You feel sad because it's the best school? And why should we keep it open? You take it, speak louder.
Keep it, it's the school open.
How should we keep the school open? What should we do? We ask them to keep it open? Thank you, Zion. Okay, how do you feel that now you found out that the school is clo- closing? Oh, I'm gonna miss you too, but guess what? We will tra- tell them to keep it open, okay? Say, tell them, please keep our school open. Okay, how about you, Talia? How do you feel that our school is closing? Why do you feel sad about it?
Because I love learning in school.
Because you love learning in school? Yeah, so why should we keep it open?
Because school is fun, can be a good place.
Right, school is fun. Okay. Why are you sad? What? Oh, you'll miss me because the school is closing? Is that why you're crying? Hold it, hold it. Huh? Because you want to stay here? So what what do you like about E M E S? What do you like about our class? We have one? Right. And you know, we will try to keep it open, okay? So how about you? How do you feel about our school closing? I'd like all eyes on this picture, please.
I feel sad.
Why?
Because I I I love, I love all, I love I love to um um play outside and I love listening to music. Even I like learning.
You love learning, especially here at this school, right? Thank you, Keith. So what, come on. Now, tell them, tell them that we should keep it open. Say, please keep it open. Tell them.
Yeah, when when I go home, I'm gonna um tell um tell the principal, the um the principal. The um please, I'm the um the kid.
Right.
Okay, uh next we have an email from Abby DeHady.
My name is Abby DeHady, and I'm one of the support staff members at Utah Marshburn Elementary. This is my first year as a new Utah Marshburn staff member, and it has been a whirlwind of enjoyment. Hearing that Utah Marshburn may unfortunately close shook the culture of the school. Staff members are frustrated with this news, staff members are frustrated with this news. Utah Marshburn has been a pillar of the community in terms of resources, safety, achievements, and education for many years. I recently learned how far the school's positive impact reaches when I wore Utah Marshburn T-shirt to the grocery store. A woman approached me, said she graduated from Utah Marshburn Elementary in two thousand five. She said, she also said that she loved the school and that it had impacted her in a tremendous way. She wanted to continue the conversation and hear recent updates about the school. Her last thing members of the school demonstrated is mission, empowering students so that they can achieve academic success. She explained that Utah Marshburn helped her to achieve more in life. Closing it will prevent other students from sharing the positive experiences and achievements. Therefore, I firmly disagree with closing Utah Marshburn Elementary. I request that we find more opportunities for funding to improve and maintain the building. Utah Marshburn has a history of supporting families with resources that many outside organizations cannot provide, such as enrichment programs, supplies, healthier programs, and coat and food drives. Closing Utah Marshburn would stunt the growth of students who could conquer the world. Our school deserves a chance to continue the legacy that many who have graduated experienced for years. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak out. And that was from Abby DeHady.
Okay, um next we have a live comment. Is uh George Hopkins available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Hopkins. I am a proud product of Baltimore City Schools. I went to Cherry Hill Elementary School, uh Cardigee Woodson in Cherry Hill, which is now closed. I also attended Arnett J. Brown Middle School, which is now known as New Era Academy. And I currently live in southwest Baltimore, a block from Stewart Hill Academy. And I'm here tonight speaking as pastor of Sewebo Community Church, who was a partner of Su- uh Stewart Hill Academy, and also speaking as co-carrer build. Um many of our build institutions, Baltimoreans United and Leadership Development have relationships with uh the schools that are proposed to close. But I speak tonight primarily as a pastor of Sewebo Community Church, and I don't just speak for Stewart Hill. I speak for the decision for all the schools um to be proposed to be closed. Uh what you might know is that this today, NPR revealed an investigation that last year during the pandemic, there was a three percent decrease in public school enrollment throughout the country. And the investigation showed that that decrease also happened again this year, reminding us that our families, our world, is still in a time of a pandemic that's impacting our schools and impacting our family. So the idea of evaluating enrollment when there is low enrollment throughout the country um is something that I wondered tonight is why now? Why are we making this decision now? Also released today is the impact of COVID in Dunbar High School, which has been significantly Also released today is the impact of COVID in Dunbar High School, which has been significantly impacted and changing their rhythms. These are the things that are happening for all of our students. And again, I asked the question, why are we making this decision now? Is it a good idea to evaluate the health of our schools in the middle of a pandemic? Why now? What I do appreciate about school leadership is that I know your commitment to developing the whole student, uh, not just education, but social and emotional. And I know that you're aware that during the pandemic, the statistics show that mental health challenges have drastically increased in our kids. And so again, when we're coming out of a pandemic and kids can reengage from isolation to their communities, going to a familiar space in their schools, going to familiar people with their teachers, I keep asking, why are we doing this right now? This is a time when we can get together with families again for the holidays, where last year we couldn't because we were isolated. Our kids can have now something that is gained, but we're reminding them that something might be taken away. Why are we doing this right now? Uh, rather than our kids being reminded that maybe Christmas is open, maybe New Year's will be different this year. They're now wrestling with the emotional weight of something once again being closed. Why are we doing this right now? We have a moment where our kids could be celebrating a new time to celebrate this, this holiday season, but instead we're giving the narrative of scarcity again, that you have to choose. There is a lack of why are we doing this right now? I, again, I appreciate the school leadership. I know your commitment to the community and to community schools. I know that you believe that communities thrive when schools thrive, and schools thrive when communities thrive. And I know that you're aware that we're in a time when great amounts of federal funds are going to impact our local community. The last time this happened, that federal funds impacted our local community, that money was used to establish redlining, which we've been fighting against for a generation. And right now, in this moment, we have promised that instead of telling our kids that they are lacking, we can say there's promise and investment. My question again tonight is why now? Which leads me to my request. Delay the decision. Delay the decision. Allow our families, our teachers, allow our children to enjoy a holiday without being reminded that they're, self-being told again that there is less than. Delay the decision and engage the community in, in ways that we can work together. I, I found a, a moment that was difficult for me when we met with city stu- school staff in the auditorium at Stewart Hill. Uh, we, I saw the city school staff standing on a mural that someone from the community painted, standing in an auditorium that the community worked together, raising over twenty thousand dollars to revamp a, uh, auditorium to give our kids an auditorium that we believe they had the dignity to deserve. So that when they had graduations, they weren't coming to, their families weren't coming into places that had no sound system and messed up carpet. We redid the entire thing and then we hear this bad news saying this building is not worth it. And we say, yes, we already know. We put the time and the money into it. I encourage you to delay the decision so that we can have conversations with the leaders of our school system in the community, not about how to save expenses, but how to invest in our communities and in our schools. I want to just end with this. The narrative of communities and people having to move to go to things of value is an old narrative. I believe we have leaders in our school system who want to rewrite the story that people don't have to move to go to valuable things, but we can move valuable things and investments to our communities and our kids can have those things that they deserve in their backyard and in their communities. Delay the decision. Allow our kids to breathe, allow our kids to reconnect, allow our kids to hope, and engage in working with the community of how we will not save expenses, but in this moment of opportunity, invest again in our local communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Uh, next we have a video, an email to be read. Okay. To whom it may concern, my name is Gwendolyn Williams and I am a first grade teacher at Stewart, oh, I'm, camera's off. Okay. Uh, to whom it may concern, my name is Gwendolyn Williams and I'm a first grade teacher at Stewart Hill Academic Academy. I feel very strongly against the recommendation to close our school. The reasons I disagree with the decision are as follows. First, Ms. Brown, our very committed, faithful, and devoted principal, has truly made an overwhelmingly big difference in the school's culture and climate. She believes in strong relationships with our teachers and students. Teachers and, with our parents, students, and our stakeholders, as well as our staff members, to work together for the good of our students. Our school has a remarkably refreshing and positive atmosphere than our previous administration. You can feel the difference and also see the difference in how she has even made our school shot and how she has even made our school clean and ready for reopening this year. I witnessed what our school looked like before Ms. Brown came here and how it looks now. In addition to that, it would be truly so, true, it would truly be so unfair as a devoted, hardworking principal like Ms. Brown have, to have to put in so much work and time to not finish in the course. In closing, please find in your hearts to keep our school open for the good, for the good of our students and our principals. Ms., Mrs. Brown's vision was to make our school a first-class Blue Ribbon. Without vision, people perish. And because of Ms. Brown's vision, make no mistake about it, our school has been improving and getting better each and every year. Please also realize that we did take a hit in the decrease of enrollment because of the COVID pandemic. However, it's been like that throughout Baltimore City and other surrounding school systems. In fact, I feel that it would be even more beneficial to have smaller classrooms to ensure more effective instruction, less disruption, and more one-on-one attention from the teacher, which results to a highly effective, quality educate, instruction, and learning. I really appreciate my principal, the hard work and dedication invested, for I've been in the system for many years, and I must honestly, that Ms. Brown has made a strong difference in our school and our community. Thank you in advance for allowing our school to stay open so we can accomplish our goal of being a highly successful Blue Ribbon school led by our very own beloved old principal, Lisa Brown. Sincerely, Gwendolyn Williams, educator slash facilitator slash minister. Okay, uh, next we have an email from Tom Homans. My name is Tom Homans and I work at the Christian Community Center on Hollands Street, a block away from Stewart Hill Academic Academy. We have an after-school program from two thirty to five each school day. Most of our kids come from Stewart Hill and have had such a great partnership with them for over thirty years. I've never been more impressed with the principal and the faculty and their love for the children. They have such a great combination of professionalism and kindness to the children that is rare these days. I have many in, I have many friends in the neighborhood that work with Stewart Hill and are doing everything they can to help the school and children succeed. I've known many children from Stewart Hill over the years who are now adults and are succeeding in life. The families I work with now do not want to pull the children out and send them to another school. It would be a hardship for them and their children. And if anything can be done to keep Stewart Hill open, I think it would be wise and prudent to do so. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Okay, next we have a video. What's your name?
My name is Ty, my name is Titus Thompson. And I really wanna keep, um, this school open because I really, I really, um, have fun. Have some fun memories from that place, um, I really love it.
Uh, we have another email next.
To whom this may concern. My name is Donnell Nance. I am a resident of UN Square and former student of Stewart Hill Academic Academy. I'm writing this letter in opposition to the proposed closing of the school. Reasons stated for, reasons stated for closing the school include low enrollment, maintenance issues, a stream that flows under the school. Beginning with the low enrollment reason, I truly find it disheartening that the school board would consider a closing, especially when the data presented is significantly skewed. Past year numbers, taking consideration nursery school students, where recent year decreases result in data that conveniently neglects to include nursery students to give an accurate number of students. Perhaps repairs made a mistake in submitting, and submitted data to the school board, or perhaps, excuse me, repairs thought the community affected would be so ignorant that folks would not recognize the difference in populated data. Either way, could the school board make such a determination based on inconsistent slash incorrect data? Moving on to maintenance issues, reports show that the school has not properly maintained, has not been properly maintained in years. Some items on the report have not been replaced slash repaired or touched since I was a student in the so, the school over two decades ago. That is a true sign of purposeful neglect and disregard for a school desperately in need of maintenance attention. One example of neglect would be the running, running showers. A work order was submitted to repair the showers and sat for over a year before being resolved. The result of this action stemmed into other actions which resulted in costly repairs. Whose fault is that? Whose fault is it that facilities management failed to do their job? Certainly not the communities and other stakeholders. If facilities management properly performed, some or even most of the maintenance issues would not exist. Regarding the last reason for closure, the stream, the school system was aware of this when the school was built. Prior to the commercial building being built, the contractor and school system had a responsibility to test the site, survey the site, and perform additional duties to conclude that the site was safe and suitable to build on. The duties would have resulted in the showing of a more than two hundred-year-old stream that runs under the school and most of the school homes in the community. Engineers have also prepared the plans to account for the stream and structural integrity of the building. I'm sure the engineers have not taken into consideration the amount of neglect the building received over the years, which brings us to the point of this letter. Based on the above information, it seems the school system does not have a true reason for recommending closure. It seems that the recommendation comes out of a state of laziness and stubbornness to admit neglect. It also seems the school system is trying to cover up its neglect with a lot of erroneous information excuses. It seems that the school board is looking for an easy way out. Going to a, going a step deeper, the recommendation to split the students between two neighborhoods is a detriment to all stakeholders and a step backwards. Closing the school would send the students to a school in an area that's nestled in the middle of a high drug and crime zone. This increases the risk of direct child exposure to the drug trade, potential for kidnapping, and even worse, an increased threat to trafficking gun safety. Have you and would you walk through the areas you're proposing our children to walk through daily? Would you and, would you and have you had your child walk through those areas to receive the same exposure you are willing to expose our children to? I highly doubt it. It's easy to be a bureaucrat, pushing the button, signing a document or recommending closure without experiencing what the residents slash students experience daily. Would you expose your family to the same fear you're willing to expose ours to? Please think of these questions as you make your decision. Lastly, please take into consideration the love, care, and consideration the communities residents, partners, and stakeholders have put into S H A A. Would other schools recommended for closure have received the gifts of tens of thousands of dollars towards needed maintenance from outside organizations, such as Gallery Church, for instance? What other organization do you know is willing to secure funding to partner to build an adult resource center, such as Southwest Partnership? What other organization is willing to partner to open a daycare program in, in the school to assist with the community needs and before slash after-school programming? What other communities do you know is willing to secure funding by grants to donate and create outdoor spaces for student learning opportunities and breaks such as Union Square? The list goes on. It would be a severe insult to all stakeholders here to close this school, especially when Baltimore City Schools have asked for partners, volunteers, and resources to come to many of its poorly maintained and poorly funded schools. Did you know that Stewart Hill has been trying to grow the ESL program? More assistance from North Ave could certainly assist with this endeavor. Currently, students are being bused out to different neighborhoods to attend schools with ESL programs. Stewart Hill's leadership has begun recruitment for those students who attend the school in their very own community. Why take this away? UN Square and its surrounding communities have always been family-oriented communities geared towards growth. We have more and more families moving in with children who will become school-aged in the next couple of years. Are you telling us now we made the wrong move because you don't wanna fix your mistake slash purposeful neglect? Give Stewart Hill a chance to recover from the pandemic as many schools need to do. Send assistance to grow the ESL program as the principal is trying to do to reach our increasing population of Latinx residents. We as a community ask and demand that our school remain open. It is what will help to build a more family-oriented community. And that is from Donnell Nance.
Sorry, bear with me. Okay, so, uh, earlier I missed this video. Uh, we played, uh, Ashka Thomas's son. I didn't realize that she also submitted a video, so I'm going to share that.
Hello, my name is Ashley Thompson. I am a former Shea parent, Stewart Hill Academic Academy parent. My son attended, uh, pre-K in two thousand eighteen in kindergarten, uh, with Mr. Adams in kindergarten in two thousand nineteen with Miss Alma until two thousand twenty, when, um, everything shut down in March for the pandemic. Uh, when the pandemic hit, we moved, so, uh, so we're no longer at school. I was able to experience, um, the leadership of Dr. Lipscomb, who, um, was moved, transitioned to a different school and, um, Dr. Brown, who is currently the principal, um, leading the school. Um, our experience at Stewart Hill was incredible, uh, as a former, um, community member and active in Community Square, um, and sorry, Union Square. Um, Shea is really what I would call a community school, like a hub, if you will. Um, they maintain great relationships, had the support of many, um, of the neighborhood organizations. Um, and, uh, really just great working relationships. You could just tell everybody was on board and trying to do what was best for the students. It was a, a real need and, um, and is a real need in this community. Uh, during our time at Stewart Hill, I was, um, able to witness a few things. Um, I saw the momentum that was building for the city's, uh, you know, the city-proclaimed turnaround school. Um, and I witnessed a community come together in unity to grieve the loss of Amira, um, little girl who, um, was in my car. Um, and even that tragic experience, I just think of, you know, I fear like what could happen, you know, when these students are forced and pushed outside of their normal, um, walking zones and what's comfortable, um, to have to go, uh, to another school without transportation and all of the things that have to be arranged to even make this a safe alternative. Um, Shea has been a pillar in the community, um, for as long as I've been there, um, and honestly, generations. There's parents that I would meet, um, they're like, oh, yeah, I went here and, you know, at the, they would have the, the gatherings where parents could come and hear about school and the open house and, you know, there was a lot of pride in the community about the school. Um, and they've seen highs and lows, don't get me wrong. Um, it's my understanding that the school, um, has grown with the community. Um, it started off smaller than it is, uh, and then, and then they expanded to eighth grade and then they decided to bring it right down, so, um, it's had to be flexible, um, and, you know, I believe that they will continue to do what they need to do to support, um, the community in the way it needs to be supported. The designation of closing this school is disheartening, um, and quite frankly, a mistake. Um, if we could, if we could, uh, continually support our turnaround schools uh, instead of sucking them dry as soon as they quote-unquote turn around, um, you know, the, the rankings and things just started to shift. We just started to see some change. We just started to see some changes. And then there was funding that was taken away, and we had to deal with the repercussions of that. And just witnessing how the school and the teachers and this administration has had to pivot to still make this an enjoyable experience for its people, it's just something to see. So, I mean, I personally attempted, I mean, I've personally witnessed people trying to kind of recruit students to go to other schools. And I just feel like if we were to invest more to give Shea the little nudge that it needs to really move into what it could do and what they really could be and live up to their potential, I think it would really be setting our peoples up for greatness and the Union Square community. So, please reconsider. We need to keep Shea open. Thank you.
Okay, we have an email next. So I'm looking for now. Ms. Anderson, would you mind resending? I do not see it.
I just resent it to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Okay, got it. Okay. Dear Board of School Commissioners, my name is Faria Wahid, and I am a teacher. I have deep respect for Dr. Sonia Sotolisis and the Board of School Commissioners. I trust that you all, you all are working hard to improve the learning conditions for our students. I do have concerns around this concept of closing schools, which relies on breaking up existing school communities in order to have sufficient capital to renovate other school buildings. This is concerning because the unintended consequences, consequence is leaving apartheid school buildings in primarily black butterfly neighborhoods that rely on schools as community anchors. In order to have fiscal capital, we are willing to give up the social capital that our school communities have established. While I'm concerned about this concept, I know the solution isn't so easy. I thought I knew a lot about school funding and how both Baltimore and Maryland have neglected to pay our school district what they deserve. However, over the past few weeks, I learned a lot more. I learned that BCPSS can't just automatically reallocate money to give school builders the needed renovations. If it was that easy, we could probably convince the board to do just that. I learned the cost of replacing the skin for our school and installing HVAC and new windows is estimated to be approximately $19.5 million, which would be almost half of what the district receives each year in capital funds to cover projects across the whole district. I also learned that capital projects need to be approved by the state several years in advance. After learning about the CIP process and legislation required, I'm seeing this problem won't really be solved at the level of the school board entirely. It goes back to funding mechanisms and processes set forth by the state with involvement from the city of Baltimore, the state of Maryland, and the school board. I'm worried that our communities haven't had time to learn more about these challenges and intricacies in a way where we can all collaborate and organize our community for change at the city and state levels. I strongly believe that we have more to do as individuals and as a community to get greater investment, to get the greater investment our students and educators deserve. A few years ago, I learned that Maryland has underfunded BCPSS by at least $3.2 billion, according to the state's own definition of adequate funding, as mandated by the courts and constitution and codified to law by the legislature. Since finding out the state of underfunding, I've marched to City Hill, I've testified in Annapolis, and I regularly email my elected representatives to do my small part in addressing these issues. I know many people are doing their small part, but it isn't adding up to the big change we need. I wonder how we can better share this information with communities deeply frustrated because I bet that they're willing to join us in City Hall in Annapolis to demand more from their elected representatives who control these budget, budgets, processes, and policies. Today, I'm asking the board to please delay the vote for annual review so we can come up with a better plan as a district in collaboration with impacted schools. The board is currently voting on, currently voting on January 11th, but Comar, Section 13A.02.09, date of decision, says schools have until April 30th. I'm simply asking for a delay in vote, in the vote to March 8th, so the district can work with the community to build trust and share more information, while also generating collaborative solutions to these larger institutional and systematic obstacles. Thank you for your time and consideration. Faria, Faria Wahid, Math Lead and Special Education Lead Teacher at Utah Marshburn. All right. Okay, do we have a Marion Blackwell online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And I believe you were going to read a written statement that was submitted. Ms. Blackwell?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes. Can you hear us?
Okay, thank you. This is a letter of opposition to the closing of Utah Marshburn Elementary School from the Historic Marbella Communities Association. From the Marbella Communities Association. The Historic Marbella Communities Association is concerned that the community was notified of the decision to close Utah Marshburn on November 10th, 2021, and the decision will be made in January of 2022. This recommendation has blindsided community and honestly, short-changed the ability for community to be engaged in the process of working with the school board and the school to address the enrollment and deferred building maintenance issues. The community current, surrounding Utah Marshburn has been severely disinvested for decades and needs investment versus disinvestment. Closing the school will deplete over 250, displaced over 250 young people and their families, and we do not want to see this happen, this happen. Furthermore, we have major development underway within Historic Marbella Hill and the larger Upton community, which will attract to our community new families seeking good community schools. Furthermore, Year Three of the 21st Century School Boarding Plan promised a full renovation of Utah Marshburn Elementary School. Closing the school will be yet another unfulfilled promise to the community. The Historic Marbella Hill Community Association is requesting that the Board of School Commissioners defer the decision to close the Utah Marshburn Elementary School for 18 to 24 months, allowing time for the community to work with the partnership, work in partnership with the school board and Utah Marshburn School to address the superintendent's concern. It is our hope that the Board of School Commissioners will support this important center recommendation. This is on behalf of Atiba Narongay and the Board of Directors of the Marbella Hill Communities Association and the Marbella Community Association at Large.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Oh, was that, was that your entire comment?
Well, we have, we have been working with the neighboring communities of Madison Park, Boating Hill, Marbella Hill, and No Boundaries are all concerned about the proposed closing of the school. We are trying to invest in our community, bring community together, and have a better school, have better schools within our cashman area. This is sort of something that we already blindside with, as I said before, and it is a detriment to our community to close this school, which is a historical structured name after one of our residents. So the school is, is not just the school, it's a beloved community asset, and it is a, it is a place that the community focus on for its young people. And leading its young people, it has done a tremendous job. We have seen great improvements, and we see things happening that we have wanted to happen for many years to come. With impending development, one of the biggest draws to strong communities, healthy cities, is stable and good schools. It would be too, in my opinion and the board's opinion, our best directive is to build back a better school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a live moment from Biff Browning. Are you available?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. You have five minutes.
Okay, I'm going to read a statement we prepared. I'm president of the Union Square Association. Where Shaw, the Stewart Hill Academic Academy is located. So I'd like to read the statement we prepared. Stewart Hill is an integral part of the Union Square neighborhood and a true community school. Principal Lisa Brown and her staff and teachers are doing a wonderful job at Stewart Hill with students despite years of neglect, a lack of regular maintenance, and no significant investment in the building by the district. This year, Stewart Hill was finally able to add ESL and Head Start programs, which have been needed for years in order to better serve the diverse and growing communities that exist in the Union Square and Mount Clare community neighborhoods. The most recent census data shows that there has been a 219% increase in Union Square and a 21% increase in Mount Clare in children under five. So there is both a need for this school and rising numbers of young children on the way in this school zone. Besides providing a safe space for our children to learn, Stewart Hill has also served the community in additional ways. It provides after-school programs, GED programs, and food distribution. It is the home of Sui Bo Church, which we heard a wonderful and stirring commentary from Pastor George Hopkins. A vibrant church whose members live in our community and that have invested volunteer time, money, and services to improve the school for the students, the staff, the church, and the community. It is developing a community space with the Southwest Partnership. They now have a community school liaison, Mark Byrd, who is working to build even more partnerships and has established great relationships with the students. Union Square and community members have worked with the school to update its library offerings, to acquire and install safe spaces for reading and literacy programs, to create and implement greening, environmental history, and art projects, one of which resulted in Shaw students creating a work of art celebrating the 100th and 150th anniversaries of the Right to Vote for Women and African-Americans that was displayed in the Banneker Douglas Museum in Annapolis. And these students traveled to Annapolis to attend the opening and meet the governor and lieutenant governor. Stewart Hill students' artwork was the only, was one of only 18 displayed artworks, and the only one that was youth-led in the whole, across the whole state. Ms. Brown and her team are very engaged in the neighborhood projects and events. Ms. Brown lit our community Christmas tree this past Friday night, a tree decorated with homemade ornaments from community members and children who attend Stewart Hill. The closing of this school also impacts other programs in our community that provide services to the students and families that are served by Stewart Hill. It's our understanding that the closing of our school also could cause us to lose other state incentives for our region that depend on a local school to be located in the area. I say all of this to make sure you understand that if you follow through with your intent to close Stewart Hill, you not only traumatize and endanger our schoolchildren, you also create a downward spiral on our community that will close small businesses, nonprofits, stop housing developments, and sabotage years of hard work and investment by residents and organizations to transform and grow Southwest Baltimore. I will end by echoing the request that before, that have been said before. Reassigning our students to Frederick Elementary, that will cause them to have to walk a distance that is not safe and very dangerous. I would invite you, as many others have, to come out and walk this route with us. Others have pointed out the distance, the high-speed, heavy-traffic corridors that must be crossed, the crime and drug dealing that is prevalent in this area. I would add that if you look at the sex offender registry, there are over 100 registered sex offenders on the route that you propose for our youngest children to travel. There are two other schools, Charles Carroll Barrister and Southwest Baltimore Charter, that are much closer, have ESL programs, and do not require our children to cross large and dangerous roads. That would only be our secondary choice if we cannot convince you to keep Stewart Hill open. I would urge the district to rethink its priorities and make the safety, welfare, and future of the children of Baltimore the main determinant in your decision. This is your chance to show our children, and the young man from Cherry Hills who spoke earlier tonight, that their health, welfare, education, and well-being are more important and worth more than just the assigned dollar per student value being used to make assessments and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final testimony of the night is a video from the, it's a group video from the Literacy Connection.
Okay, so hi, my name is Tanya. And I'm a part of Stewart Hill Academy as an aftercare provider. Let's see, that we provide aftercare. We used to provide before K, before the COVID, but now we just enter aftercare. So it's this way, so I bring the kids, I put the kids up, and we bring them upstairs to the school and we help with homework. So for that, saying that, that would be a big, like a big loss for the kids that used to be, you know, used to be in need and getting the help that they need, some of the, like the homework. You know, eating crafts and stuff and something. I mean, it would be very, very disappointing for the school to not continue to be open and far, you know, going to the distance of the school. So that's a lot to act for the prostitute that don't drive, that want their kids in safety, safely to get to school. It's a lot. Very upsetting about it. I'm just praying, I pray, I pray every day that they just keep it open. I do my job. And the kid, I love the kid, I love the kid, I do.
Hi, my name is Tate Martin. I want this school to stay open because I love this school. And I just don't want to transform because this school means so much to me. And I just want, I just want everybody to stay strong because I know everybody loves this school. I just wanted to stay open. So everybody can just keep going and wanting. So everybody can make it up to 10, 3. And I love my teachers. I basically love everyone at this school. I love my students. I just want this school to stay open. And I want to go on to a higher school more because I just want to learn so much. I want to stay smart. I just love it because it's a big building so everybody can stay in. And everybody can, like, have a good time.
I'm a Tate Mara, and I'm a school kid, and...
My name is Tina Vera and I'm a school kid and the reason why I don't want the school to close down. It's because I'm used to being here. I've been here for two years and. Um, the school is really big where everybody can like. Get each a class where I love my teachers and I love everything. And it's like a tall building where like it can be like a lot of classroom on each level. I love working and I wanna. Give this school till I get to fifth grade. I don't want it to close down. Because I'm used to it. I'm renewing Sayana. Um, I love this school. Uh, we can get to here. And your final school open. And I love my teachers, the principal, everything about this place. And I wanna stay here until sixth grade.
Okay, that was the end of testimony. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Christian, and I wanna thank my board commissioners um. For hanging in there with us again, um another long night. I wanna thank the community for your testimony. Um, it really truly does help us. Um, as we make this very tough decision, so. Um, we're grateful for your time and for all the videos and the emails and the letters. And the folks who showed up live tonight to speak. We really do appreciate that. Um, I wanna thank the um school system staff um for all of their work that they have also put into. Um, preparing these reports for us to review. I wanna encourage my fellow board commissioners. To make sure that we're going to these visits that have been set up for us um to visit with these schools and I wanna thank the commissioners who. Who have um visited schools already. Um, with that, I wanna close our meeting tonight. I wish everyone a great night and um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it seems like we have someone whose letter was submitted but was not read. And can someone please check on that before you officially close the meeting, please?
Yeah, it was actually, I would, thank you for that. I was just about to let Chair Richardson know. I got the email while you were talking, so if you can. Uh, Chair Richardson, you wanna finish your thought? I'll read the email and I believe we can close.
Read the email and then we'll say goodnight to everyone.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, this is from Erica Robinson. My name is Erica Robinson. I taught at Utah Marshburn Elementary School for ten years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I would like to voice my concern against the proposed recommendation to close Utah Marshburn Elementary. If I'm like nothing else during my time at this school. Is that E S aims to support the needs of the whole child, the families, and even the community. When you step foot in our building, you get a welcoming feeling and greeting. You notice the positive language and effective statements used towards staff and students. That have learned over the years through our training as a restorative practice school. Our numerous. Visitors have commented on how calm our building is any given time throughout the day. We developed a thing like atmosphere that allows the opportunity to to learn in a safe and nurturing environment. academically, we made a fourteen point four percent gain in the number of students performing at or above level. From B O Y to M O Y in the two thousand nineteen twenty school year, according to Amplify Data just before the pandemic hit. Since then, we have experienced some key challenges to get back some sense of normalcy in the school setting. We want the opportunity to make further gains with our students now that they, we are back in the building. We want to see this to the end. We deserve it, so do our students. Although we are a small school, we have a number. We have a huge number of appealing offerings for students and staff that develop and grow. These include Promise Heights Organization, Judy Center, Literacy Lab Tutoring, Amplify Tutoring, F E V Tutoring. Child first after-school program, fully functioning new teacher induction program of which I'm a site-based mentor. Of which I'm a site-based mentor. During my time at the school, I've seen fans experience a lot of trials and tribulations, including crime, death, food insecurity, other horrible issues. However, one constant factor has been the connection with Utah Marshburn Elementary School. Excuse me, in conclusion, our students need and deserve a safe school in their. Understanding of the sport they require. It is for these reasons, I oppose the recommendation to con- to close. Marshburn Elementary School for the two thousand twenty two twenty three school year. Erica.
Thank you, Christian. Good night, everyone.